Welcome everyone to the zoning board meeting of November 23rd, 2021. My name is Marty Akins, I'm the chairman. The vice chairman's with us, Mr. Cavares, board members, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Chin, and Mr. Hemel. There's five people here tonight for the board. You're all going to be asked to take an oath before you speak. We're going to deal with that in sections for the people that are going to speak on yes or no and all that. So going with that, Mr. Cavares, could I have a motion to waive the minutes of November 9th?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes of the November 9th meeting.
Second.
Second.
On the motion, saying then, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so moved. I have a request here for a six-month extension. It was a death in the family and they couldn't move the project ahead. So it's 25 Cliff Street. Mr. Chairman, I mean, Mr. Vice Chairman, could you give me a motion for?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Demand number 20-52, 25 Cliff Street, I make a motion to extend for six months.
Second.
On the motion, saying then, Madam Clerk, can we have a voice vote?
Yes, Mike Cavares?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes, sir.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
John Hemel?
Yes.
Bart Akins?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thanks, sir.
Further on to tonight's, in old business, we're going to do 105 C Street. TBA 2175, JBC C-Speed LLC for variance to demolish existing building, construct a new 24-unit residential building with parking under on the premises 105 C Street. Before I ask the applicant to say anything, the counselor, the council would like to speak. It's 21?
Is it Counsel McCarthy or Counsel Mahoney?
No, it's McCarthy, but first of all, the applicant, Mr. Fleming?
Chris Carroll?
Chris, I'm sorry, Chris. You have, you have a set of plans here that I guess you dropped off. And I haven't got them, they went out this morning via email because they weren't here in time to be mailed. I never saw them, I don't know who else saw them on the board or not, but I know personally, I haven't had a chance to review them. It went from 24 to 21, I believe now. Now you're saying it's 21?
Correct.
Okay. And I want the counselor to speak because he called me and asked me if he could speak in this first because he has 300 people that don't want this. The whole neighborhood, I guess he told me, is up in arms. Counselor, are you here? McCarthy, yeah, you're right here.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. And thank you, let me just kind of give a reader's digest before we get into it. This project was mentioned months ago, first as a 32-unit project, it went down to 24, now it's down to 21. It's, it's on the Imperial Terrace location, which I think a lot of folks that are on here tonight really know that it's a very tough lot. Period for anything, even when it was the Chinese restaurant, it's a tough lot. Logistically, the, the front is not wide and the, the back narrows up. The applicant put in, well, first of all, we had two very good neighborhood meetings, well-attended. One several weeks ago at the Fox and Hounds, right next door to the site, and then we moved it up the street for better presentation, location at Cardington, and that was well-attended. Yeah, folks in the neighborhood are not thrilled with what's been rolled out so far. There are a few people that I've spoken with that know that eventually something's going to go into that site. But the density that's there now still, the setback, the parking, there's still a lot of questions that are flying around with folks in regards to how this is all going to work. In my opinion, at this point, I can't support what they have right now. I know a lot of people would hope that it wasn't condos and it wasn't apartments, it was something else, but we don't have control over that. But I think you're going to hear a lot of negativity from the neighborhood. They understand the importance of the right project and the right structure being put in that lot, Mr. Chairman. So just to give you an idea, that's what's happened in the last month or so. The neighborhood's always very involved, not just the abudders, but a lot of folks stretching from Marymount all the way down C Street. So that's just my two cents here at the beginning, Mr. Chairman, to give you guys an idea. And you can go forth and I'll chime in if, if I need be. But right now, what they had up there after the last meeting and after going down to the site myself over the weekend, I'd like to see them work on it a little bit more and come back again. If we have to have another neighborhood meeting or another one after that until we get it right, so, thank you.
All right, Counselor, did, did you, people with the, with the constituents, did you speak about 21 units, not 24?
Yes, 21 is the, we saw 24 the first go-around, the first community meeting, which was several weeks ago. About a week or so ago, we had another meeting with a, with a good number of folks there. 25, 30 people attended both meetings, and they were a variety of folks in the neighborhood, not just the abudders. And we, we saw 21 at that time.
I, I know, I haven't seen these plans, and it's the first I heard that it was 21, because we don't talk about this stuff till we get here. A set of plans comes in my house, which I never received these, so personally, I didn't even get to look at these. And the clerk today, just so we know, when it comes to that, was delivered another, how many sheets, Madam Clerk?
Three more sheets on top of the, so it's nearly, almost 300.
So there's about 300 people that signed opposed to this project that live around the neighborhood. So I'm going to ask you if you'd like to go forward tonight, or you want to sit, meet with the counselor and go back and see if you can come up with something together and with the neighborhood? Something a little better to make this work for, for all the neighborhood, or you want to continue? It's your right to do what you want. Chris?
Yeah, why don't I give it a, give it a thought? I just wanted to say, we thought we were working with the counselor and there was no, you know, there was no purpose in trying to avoid any issue, and I apologize for you not having your plans. We have 21 units, 42 spaces. You'd like to keep going? Okay, we'll go on, we'll go on record. We have our team in tonight that can make a presentation again. And then maybe we can return at another time when you have the ability to look at the plans more complete. We definitely want your input. Does that offend you, or?
No, not at all, not at all. That's your right, whatever you want, but I don't know if you guys were thinking, maybe we'll cut down a couple more units and make this, make everybody happy here. But that's your call, and you want to go forward, that's fine. So with that, I just want a few people to know whoever's going to speak, don't reiterate what the other person said. And if you are, make it real short and sweet, because we're going to have a lot of people and this could take hours if everyone's going to go over the same stuff. Make your points, make it clear, and then we can move on to the next person. Right now, Mr. Carroll, you have the floor.
Good evening, for the record, I'm Christopher Carroll, I'm council of record for this project. 105 C Street, as we all know, was the former site of China's car, Imperial Terrace, and as a result, it's no longer in operation. This group took over the property, did some due diligence with city of Quincy officials, planning, zoning, zoning officials, to get input of what would work.
Do you prefer to continue it?
Oh, Mr. Akins?
Yep.
Here you go. Just a last minute thought, would you prefer that we continue it so that you can have the plans in place? So you can look at, I, in that, I know that you're a very, you give a lot of positive input, and I definitely would, you know, appreciate everything you have to say. So would, would it make you more comfortable if you had some time to digest these plans and then we can come back at another time?
Well, I think with the whole board, maybe too, because some of these guys just got them an email and I don't even know how they digested them. Let me see.
Okay, I think it would be beneficial, myself.
All right, to put it forward?
Yeah, yeah.
What do, what do you need?
Okay, thank you, first off, thank you.
What's, a date?
What, what would you like?
I think we, I think we push to the next meeting. I'm not sure why the plan never came in, but I, I think we, we continue to the next meeting and?
December 14th?
December 14th?
Perfect.
Thank, thank you. And please, if, if, I will, I will be available if anybody wants anything, I'll hand-deliver it, whatever it works. And if, if we find that you need more information, we're here. So sorry for this back and forth.
That's fine, it was, it was, things just, sometimes that gets, you know, we try not to talk about no projects out of this place except for a council will call and just say, listen, I'm, I'm going to, I need to speak because I'm at a meeting. So and that's what, the council called me and said, can I speak first because I, I got things to do tonight? I said, yeah, sure.
And I, and I want to go on the record, as far as the counselor goes, he's gone out of his way to have these meetings, make it informative, and that's why we're at the point where we have, we've gone from close to 30 down to 21, and he's been a very moving force on that.
Okay, very good. Mr. Cavares? Could we have a motion to move this?
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, you, you have Counsel Mahoney with her hand up, I don't know if you want to?
But we're not, we're not speaking, but go ahead, Counselor, go ahead, make it quick.
I just have a quick question. Out of curiosity, this is 21 units, it was, it was 30, then it moved down to 24, now it's 21. Why, why, and I've been on these meetings before with, where you've been very upset that it didn't go to planning and it's a zoning. The area that this is in, it needs a traffic study, it's a terrible location, and to have the, the zoning be done first before actually going to planning to discuss those things seem a little backwards.
Well, right now, we're going to move it to the 20th, the 14th of December, and I, and I'll look into that, Counselor.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Michael, could I please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Demand number 21-75, JBC C-Speed LLC for variance to demolish the existing building and construct a new 24, and maybe now 21, residential building with parking under the premises numbered 105 C Street, and make a motion to continue the hearing to December 14th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, posed, so moved. Anyone here tonight, it's going to be December 14th, same time, same channel?
Zoom information will be on the website.
And the Zoom information's on the website if you have to get it, okay? Thank you very much. Further on to tonight's business, we have an old business, Susan Corcoran. For variance to subdivide the property and create a new building lot in a residential structure, 94 Marymount Road, case number 2177. Is the applicant a representative here?
The Chairman, do you know the name of the applicant? If the applicant is here, give me a virtual hand raise or wave.
Susan Corcoran, there she is, she's waving her hand. Susan?
Yes, I am here, I'm sorry, I was.
Good afternoon.
Susan, before you start?
Take an oath.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Susan, why don't you tell the board what you want to do with your property?
Yes, before we begin, I would like to make an amendment to section three. There was an error on that, so I would ask you, please, Chairman, to strike the, to subdivide the property, just to take that out and have it be petition requests dimensional variance and create a new buildable lot for a residential structure.
All right, let's, let's talk about first, what, what I'm looking at and maybe what the board's looking at before we do go forward. We have that lot line, you're going through a four-foot-high concrete wall.
Yes, so what I, what I am proposing is to take that concrete wall down.
And there's a rear door there.
In the back?
And there's a side door that you go in, you walk up the steps into the side door.
So.
How are you going to put that back?
I have, we propose to, to do that with a, we would have somewhere.
Hold on, you can't hear you on this end, you're breaking up, just, something's happening, we can't hear you.
You can't hear me?
Now we're all right. Yep, go ahead.
Okay, so I had worked with Counsel McCarthy, who is here today, and I just wrote something out, and you can interrupt me, obviously, whenever you want to. I am the executor of my parents' estate.
Yep.
Walter Stanziani and Ann Stanziani. They purchased the land decades ago in the belief that they were going to, with adjoining lot, build on it. And I had met with Jay Duker several times, along with Counsel McCarthy. I thought actually that they had applied for a variance and we, we researched it, and they had not applied for a variance. They had at one point worked with the developer and seeing if they could develop that lot. But they, they did not pursue it, and I think I wrote that in the application, Mr. Chairman, that they had worked with the developer, and then my mother got sick, so they never pursued it.
Okay.
Since becoming executor, I'm sorry, did you have a question or?
No, go ahead.
Oh, okay, so since becoming executor, I realized that there would be de minimis intercessions into the local ordinances. And I have to say, everyone in the city of Quincy has worked with me in explaining everything as far as the numbers, and I work with Claudio Salis, and he did, he was the surveyor, and I presented that with my application in requiring a variance. The city engineer has reviewed the plans to great length and determined that there are no engineering obstacles to the granting of a variance. Further, the local neighborhood has no opposition, and that was through Counsel McCarthy. They, there was one call, and I think he can speak to that as well, that there was one call from the neighbor, if you're looking towards our house, the neighbor to the left, and he said that the neighbors were not opposed to this. His concern was that someone would take down the structure that was there now, so my, my family house, and build on that. Honestly, that's my concern too, but, you know, someone bought our house, in other words, someone bought my family house and took it down. So after we bought it, after we sold it, if someone knocked it down. But as you know, we don't have any control over that.
Exactly, if someone buys, puts it down, it's up to them.
I know. Mr. Akins, I would hate that too. I never want to drive by that street. I told, I think I told Counsel McCarthy that, that's sentimental, but I wouldn't have any control over that. But Mr. McCarthy can speak too.
If you're going, I'm just trying to say, if you've got a lot here, you're going, you're going to have a 5,000 square foot lot, right? And if they're going to build by regulations, that you have a lot there now, 13, 13, 20, and 25. And you're going to have a teeny little house in the middle, and you can't be getting closer to the neighbor in there, and you're only, you, as far as I'm looking at this, you're like, you're bringing this, what, 6.5, I can't even read this myself, 6.5 or 8.5, I don't know what that is, from your house.
So they're talking about the, what Salis did or?
I'm going to get a pair of glasses here, I don't know, I got 20. The left side and the front.
Okay.
0.2.
So when I met with Mr. Duker, he said that we're not that, that far off.
To me, 13 is half, you're putting in half, you're making two non-conforming homes is what you're going to do. So I don't know. You'll have one non-conforming, which would be yours, correct?
Well, we will be taking off, so I'm just looking at this, what he gave us, we will be taking off the, the, the concrete structure. And then that would be in compliance, as far as I'm concerned. And then?
Go ahead.
The what, I'm sorry?
No, go ahead.
Okay, so this, so we don't have any, we don't have any plans at this point, but if, if we were, so there's no, at, at this point, we don't have any plans for construction, but obviously.
So here's what, here's what you're looking.
Go ahead.
No, you're looking at the sell the house and then sell the lot.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
You have the floor, go ahead.
So, so we have, that's exactly what we're looking to do.
Yep.
And then, and then whoever buys that lot would, would have to come in and abide by whatever they, they were going to build on it.
Correct.
And if we are going to build on it.
Right now, your lot wouldn't be a buildable lot unless it's a teeny little house, because you're going to have 13, 13s. You might have a 20-foot house, correct? Well, how big is that? That 40 feet, 60 feet? Yeah, right, and then they're going to try to come and get a variance. Exactly, which is, we got two non-conforming buildings here now. All right. That's all I'm trying to say, you, you know, you're going to have an undersized lot, and if they want anything of size, they'd have to come here to get something else, correct?
Well, that's why I'm seeking the variance, that's why I'm seeking.
No, 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 right, you're not seeking a variance for that, you're seeking a variance that, what you want to do is seek a variance for your lot or the other lot, or both lots, or make it a buildable lot. It's not a buildable lot right now unless you build a house 20 by, I don't know how big that is, is that 62? Right, it's only 5,000, they need a variance, that's what I'm trying to say, it's not, it's not a buildable lot.
She worked on her application to subdivide. What is the variance for another?
She wants to subdivide, but we don't even know what's going in there. So I'd like to see what's going in the place that you, that you, that you, you know, I know you want a variance just to make that a lot, an undersized lot, is that what you're looking?
So what, so what do you need to see at this point? I guess it's what?
What I'm saying is you're making your home, not 13 feet from your lot line. You know, most people subdivide, they kind of give 13 and 13, and then chunk the lot off. Now, I don't know how far, I can't read this, someone, someone, someone there to tell me, I can't read this. Charlie, how far, how far is that, that lot wide? Is it 60 or is it 40? I can't read it.
It's 60.
60 feet, okay, so 24.
So you'd take 26 feet off of the 60.
Right, right, 34, all right. They still have to come here, correct, out with 60 feet. So I'm, I'm wondering why you didn't do this all in one, like have this, maybe sell this to a developer and let them do the whole thing.
Sell the lot and the house?
Yeah, like, and, and, and you want us to make an undersized lot in a house that's non-conforming because it's six feet off the property. But you're not telling us what you're building over there. I think the neighbors should know, if you're going to subdivide your property, what are we going to put there? What kind of home's going to be there, or what's there? That's just my personal opinion, how the board feels.
Okay, well, because I was told that the most we could put there would be a two-family.
No, how can you put a two-family in there?
And the, and the whole lot.
That's zone A, ain't it? Is it?
Yes, it's B, it's, it's zone B, so that's what I was told.
Do you have any reason? I always thought that, yeah, 6750, I always thought that was, sort of, only homes up that whole street, it looks it, till you get to the end. Wow, all right. I would, I'm just saying, why wouldn't you come back with a plan, what you want?
What Counsel Dave McCarthy had to say about?
All right, hold on, hold on, please, Dave, go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't know you were looking at the location and you couldn't see it.
You've done nothing wrong.
No, I thought you were talking about what?
I'm trying, I'm trying to.
Thank you.
I understand, Counselor, go ahead.
Yes, Chairman, to try to clear it up a little bit, Susan came to myself and Jay multiple times and started talking about possibilities. And there was never any discussion of what was going to go on the lot. There was discussion of taking off that family room that's on the, facing the house on the left side to try to pick up some more space. The last thing that Susan wanted was any type of calamity in the neighborhood in regards to someone coming in and trying to take down both, take down the house and try to build something monstrous, because it is res B. So we were kicking it around, this is the first time I've come in where we're subdividing and then we're, we're trying to say, okay, can we leave that other lot in a good place and leave the family home in a good place and sell it off so it doesn't get into a developer's hands that is going to try to jam something very large in those two lots? So I, I think this is more of a research night in regards to zoning with Susan. Jay knows enough, knows a lot more about the conversations that went on in regards to his comments, and I know he's not available tonight. So I don't know if you want to wait and continue it and, and talk to Jay and bring it back so it's a little more clearer.
We can do that, we can do that, because here, here's what I like to see for the neighborhood. And if I was in the neighborhood, I'd be upset just leaving a lot there and then try to put a long two-family in that lot with one variance.
Well, we could put one family, Mr. Akins, it's just, I, I don't mean to interrupt you, we don't, I don't want, because I care about that neighborhood. I grew up there, I don't want, I don't want a developer coming in, that's why I wouldn't want to sell it to a developer, and Dave articulated it correctly, that's my concern. I didn't want a developer coming in and putting something big in there.
I, I, I understand that, and here's, you're, you're in charge, it's your property, you can sell it off how you want. And, but I don't know why, I'd like to see a plan come in here that we're going to do this, and this is the house that's going in there. I'll talk to Jay about it, and maybe, maybe we can sit down with a stipulation, the only thing that can win is a single-family home with the subdivision. We could put it in there. And if it's written in there, then it's written in there, you can't do nothing. That's, that's the only way we're going to subdivide, make sure we put a single-family home in there and not wall-to-wall and 35 feet tall because of that neighborhood, you know what I mean?
I do, yes.
So let me, let me do that, why don't, why don't the board, I'll get in touch and I'll talk to the board and just tell them what, what his plans were, and then we can do it to the 14th, is that all right? What do we have in the?
Okay.
We'll do it anyway, it's not going to be a big deal, we already know that.
If it's just for the good answer, you can put her off to the 14th.
Right, so.
I have a question.
Why don't we do this, why don't we do this? Why don't we explain, let the people in the neighborhood speak, and go through the whole hearing, and then at the end, we'll, we'll make a decision on the 14th, and we'll, we'll kick it around and see what we all think, all right?
Thank you very much.
Mr. O'Brien, you with that?
Yeah, but I have, I have one question here, we've, we've run into these a lot of times where that was an extra lot that was bought.
Yep.
And, and because of unity of ownership, it became one lot?
Correct.
I'd like to determine if that lot was a standalone prior to the purchase.
Probably was, in those days.
In other words, we're going back to the original lot configurations?
Well, I don't know, I don't know if that's true or not, I, I don't know what the plans are, I, I haven't seen the original lot plan.
I know what you're asking, Brian, we did try to figure that out, I think it was the house, I, I can try to figure that out. I, we did try to figure that out.
But we understand what, what happened, there was a lot there, they bought it, then it comes in unity of one, now they want to subdivide.
Yes.
And try to put a single-family home in there, and we can make that all happen as a board member write it in with the decision. The only thing you can't put in there with the subdivision would be a single-family home. And we'll all agree to, that's the way it is, if the board sees fit. If not, then it's, whatever the board comes up with for an answer will be their answer, but. So you want to subdivide your lot and you, you want to bring it 6.2 feet from your home, correct? Okay, now, is there any questions of her right now, Mr. O'Brien? Anything else?
I know, I'm good, thank you.
All right, Mr. Cavares?
I'm a little confused, so this house right now is in progress, is that correct?
No, it's not in progress any longer, no.
It's not in progress any longer?
Yeah.
So your plan then is to sell the property?
Yes.
You're not moving back in?
No.
You're selling the property?
Yes.
Okay, you want to? Okay, you wanna sell two separate lots? Not, you wanna sell together or? Your thought is perhaps sell them separately or something like that?
Yes.
I'm, I'm, okay, alright. I'm just a little confused going back and forth and everyone talking over each other. Um, alright, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Mr. Chin?
On the fourteenth, will there be any additional plans being provided to us or are we still talking theoretically here?
It's all theoretically, there's gonna be a building in this lot. What's it gonna be, we could decide on. We could say you can only have a single-family home and not two because it's rez B with their variances. Right?
Okay, so what, the submission is really just a depiction of what's there now, just so we have an idea what's, what's?
Right, right. And she wants to make two lots so she can sell them both. And she wants to keep her house, so someone will keep her house on that lot. And then, someone could build a single-family home on the other lot so they don't beat this big ginormous home. Uh, you know, a two-family, both lots make a two-family gigantic, you know, for free, yeah. Three families.
So we're going to enter, well, okay, I don't wanna get ahead of myself, but um, you're talking about adding, you're talking about adding deed restrictions, uh, to, to a lot that doesn't exist yet?
Yes, well, we'll make it a deed restriction when, when we decide. With the subdivision will only be a single-family home in that lot.
Let me ask one question. I have another question. Alright, I'm gonna buy the house, the lot with the house on.
Yep.
I buy that lot.
Mm-hmm.
And then, five years later, the single, the little lot that isn't really that buildable, I buy that too. Now we have one lot again. They knocked down the house. They come to us to put five units up.
They put three units up, zone B.
Well, okay.
By right. I know what you're saying, by right, yeah. Instead of five townhouses. I know what you're saying with variances, correct? I get what you're saying.
And I think we have, you know, we have a title issue now because part of that land is.
You're right, you're right.
Or, or it's inconsequential what we say because the unity of, of ownership.
No one avoids it, right.
Yeah.
Right.
So.
Legally, right.
But I thought the whole thing was, your, your whole idea of this, that's why we like to see a set of plans for that lot. Then it's all done. And everyone knows what's being built there and then sold off.
So I can talk to, I think Council McCarthy and I can speak about that. Dave?
Alright, you guys can sit and do that. We got a meeting to go on, but here's what, here's what we'll do. We'll talk to Mr. Duka. And we'll have the meeting the fourteenth, but I wanna let people speak on this now and, and, and we'll hold off any decision and talk to, I wanna talk to the, uh, the city solicitor too. Uh, alright, is there anyone that wants?
Neighborhood has spoken.
Alright, you're all set, you're all set, you're all set, too, thank.
Okay, thank you very much.
Just hold off. Uh.
Okay.
Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor of this project?
I'm not sure if they're in favor or not. They've had their hands up. Uh, Steve and Sharon Bennett.
Even Sharon? Is this for this call?
Yep. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great.
I want you to take an oath, Steve, first.
Yes.
Hold on.
Wait, tell the truth, tell the truth about the truth?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, Steve, name an address for the record, please.
So Steve and Sharon Bennett were at seventy-eight Putnam Street in Quincy, Mass.
Alright.
So just to, um, add a couple of points here, my wife might add a couple of others. Um, Susan had made it clear at the beginning of her conversation that the people to the immediate left uh, facing her, her house approved everything she mentioned. We are those people. This is the very first we're hearing of this. We have not approved a single thing. We have never been approached once about anything. Um, and I'm sorry, this is like, we heard about this at the prior meeting that got postponed until today. And, um, we are not in approval of any of this. I have to be honest with you. So, uh, that's first and foremost. But we're, we're always subject to what is going to happen, obviously, because our land is directly adjacent to them and the lot that we're in question. So. And there's a built-in pool that's been buried, and there's a lot of things that are in motion. So.
Where, where's the pool built in?
Uh, it's in their backyard that's been buried.
It's in the back and it's filled in. And it wasn't this, this couple. It was not this couple. I would not lie. I'm an attorney and I'm under oath. I would, it's not this couple. It was another. Uh, it was the one person who Dave can speak about. It's not, I don't, it was not this couple who called Dave. He has a name.
No, it is, uh, Mr. Chairman, it's, um, Mr. Blakely who's, who's gotta stand up. He lives next door. But it's to the right of the, of the home and, and no one else, um, had contacted me but Rob.
Oh, to the right of the home, okay.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Well, it's on the driveway side anyway.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Which is staying the same for them, right?
And then I guess, I guess, Mr. Atkins, um, we need to know who we should be in touch with, who is our neighborhood spokesman, because I don't know, and I've never been, uh, never been broached by anybody, and I don't know who to talk to. And I think that's very important.
Mr. McCarthy, Award One Counselor.
Okay.
He's right on.
Mr. Bennett, can I jump in? Mr. Bennett, did you receive a mailing?
Did we? Yes. My wife said yes.
Okay. And on there, my number, my name's right on there, Ward Counselor. And usually when it goes out, I, I get calls or I get emails, and I didn't receive anything from anybody over there. And I knew tonight was more of a, um, well, it, it's kinda like Mr. Cabeas, uh, Board Member Cabeas has said, usually there's, there's a structure there and we're, we're already talking. And this is more of a fact-finding, what we can do type thing. But, um, I'll send out another mailing to everybody for December fourteenth on my own. Um, and, and people can call me up and, and give me their opinion.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Does your wife wanna speak?
Sharon, you want to?
Well, she's all set. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else?
We have Rob Blakely.
Rob, take an oath, please.
Wait, I have, I have to unmute him.
Oh.
How's that? Wait, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Blakely, you're up.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, uh, Dave. I had a nice conversation with Dave and, um, I'm just glad that everybody spoke up as far as, uh, Susan not wanting to have a monstrosity built. I'm totally in favor of that. You know, and if the, if the subdivision is what makes that happen, then you know, then I'm in total favor of the subdivision of the lot. And, but I did talk to Council McCarthy, Dave, about, uh, you know, what would be put there and was in favor of a single-family on the subdivided lot. And then, um, what would happen with the existing home, because, you know, that, that home would definitely be torn down by somebody that bought that lot. Um, those are just really my concerns was, you know, what, what would go in there. But yeah, ultimately, I'm in favor of a subdivision. If it keeps the, you know, anything huge going in. That, that's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Right. And, and, I mean, there's things to look at, like when they buy that single-family home, I mean, they could tear that down and put a two-family in there. That can happen. It's like, how, how can you not? I know, they could put a three, but they might not have enough room for three the way that the lots could.
Just hoping the city of Quincy, just hoping the city of Quincy could help out on what is put in those lots once they are subdivided. That, ultimately, that was my concern.
Exactly. So that's why I'm, there's a lot of ifs and ands and buts we're talking about when we're doing stuff like this. So, okay, thank you.
For sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blakely. Is there anyone else, like, speaking favor? Call our party hearing closed. Any correspondence? BPW, uh, October twentieth, twenty twenty-one, ninety-four Mary Mount Road, case number ZB eight twenty-one seventy-seven. You do not have any issues with the subdivision. However, we would like to review the site plan and utility plan. The applicant applies for building permit, the building. Uh, is there anyone opposed or undecided? Anyone opposed to this? First call? Second call? Anyone opposed or undecided?
Not seeing any hand.
Call our party hearing closed. Uh, we're gonna have to, come on, I wanna talk to the, uh, city solicitor. And, uh, we'll get Mr. Duka in here and see what we can do to, however, we gotta write this if we're gonna do it, to make it so someone don't come in there and I don't know, someone buys that property. I think that's gonna be the other problem, the lot itself. We put three units in there, uh, almost by right. It's a pretty big lot. Still. Alright, uh, Mr. Cabeas, can we have a motion to move this to the fourteenth place?
It's Mr. Chairman.
You know, just beyond, just beyond decision from the board.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, man number twenty-one seventy-seven, Susan Kupora for a co-. For a variances, subdivide the property, create a new billable lot for residents who structure on the premises number ninety-four. Mary Mount Road, I make a motion to continue the hearing December fourth.
Thank you.
On the motion, Madam Clerk, can we, uh, have a voice vote on this?
Sure. Mike Cabeas?
Yes.
Carly O'Brien?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
Ron Himmel?
Yes.
And Martin Nigan?
Yes. Just saying. Pull again?
Pull, pull.
Pull again, pull, pull again. Alright. Further into tonight's agenda. Two pages and nothing to done. New business, ZB eight twenty-one eighty, Richard Birchill for finding to remove the second floor in roof and add a new second floor and roof on the premise number twenty-two Mirzav. Is the applicant or the representative here? The applicant here? Yes, yes. Can you hear me? Huh? Yes. Can you hear me? Where am I, on the phone? Yeah, my Zoom wouldn't come in for some reason, and I had all the help of my constituents here, but we couldn't figure it out, so I'm on the phone. Okay, uh, could you please take an oath for Mr. Cabeas?
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so hope you got it?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Alright, why don't you tell us what you wanna do on your property? Alright, so I was, uh, contacted by, uh, Derek Monroe. He's a fireman for, uh, City of Quincy. About ten years. He asked me to take the second floor and the roof and the second floor off the house he currently owns for six years. Uh, the house is, uh, probably five construction projects to where it is now over the last, you know, eighty years. So the second floor is just one, one big tripping hazard. Every floor is a new threshold to a new height. And it's got four roof levels. So he asked me to take it off. We're not going outside the footprint. We're just, um, he's got a seven-year-old daughter, a newborn, and, you know, he's just trying to get the house up to snuff. So we just designed a, a new second floor with a new roof line. Uh, again, not going outside the footprint. Uh, and the neighbors across the street, both, uh, budding neighbors to the right and left, are all happy with the project. Uh, and majority of the neighborhood has already had this done to their homes. I live right up the street from the house down there. I know exactly what you wanna do with that thing, right? It's, uh, uh, any questions to the board? Mr. Cabeas?
I have done.
Mr. O'Brien? Nope. Mr. Chin?
How many bedrooms are we adding?
It's gonna be four bedrooms. Yeah, it's a four-bedroom now. We're just, we're just rebuilding them.
I see. No other questions?
Mr. Himmel?
No questions.
Okay. Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor? Gonna take down their second floor and redo it with a new roof? The house back together with the five additions that won't be there?
Council McCarthy has his hands up.
Don't worry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, yeah, I spoke with Derek Monroe and, um, I'm very familiar with Mirzav, especially that side. Uh, they were small cottages.
Right.
All the way up, uh, a good portion of that left side of Mirzav, uh, so, uh, it's great that, that he wants to, uh, stay around and, and, and add on like, uh, a lot of other homes have gone down in housing award one. So I'm in full support.
Very good. Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Second call? Third call?
Not seeing any hand.
Call our party hearing closed. I have a letter here from the BPW November fourth, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two Mirzav, case number ZB eight twenty-one eighty, who view the above-preference project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? First call? Second call? Third call closed. Mr. Cabeas, hold a motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, a man number twenty-one dash eighty, Richard Birchill for a finding to remove the second floor roof, second floor and roof. And add a new second floor and roof. The premises number twenty-two Mirzav, and I make a motion to request a finding.
Second. On the motion, say and none. Madam Clerk, can we have a voice vote?
Yes. Mike Cabeas?
Yes.
Carly O'Brien?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
Ron Himmel?
Yes.
Martin Nigan?
Yes. Ladies and gentlemen, under new business, case number ZB eight twenty-one eighty-one. A Schraff in the valley for a special permit variance to install a new LED door, LED outdoor advertising. This is seven twenty-one, seven twenty-three, Washington. African representative here.
Yes, uh, I have my son here to transfer to me. Can you do that?
Hello?
Hello?
Who's up? Alright. Could you now please take an oath, Mr. Cabeas?
Could you both take this oath? You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
And the, your son?
Yes, my son, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, could you, uh, tell us what you wanna do there?
Uh, I, I, I want to make this screen for, uh, uh, like, the menu, the picture for lobster.
Oh, it's, it, the sign that says here, it says, make lunch count from room fifteen point nine oh net? Is that gonna be an electronic sign you're gonna change? Is it gonna change?
Like, like, no, not shiny. It is like TV, the screen like TV.
Is, are you gonna change it? Is it gonna be changeable?
Yes.
Alright, and what, how long are you gonna change it and enter bills? Because of the way the road, if he goes around there, I'm just asking. You're gonna change it once a day, four times a day, every twenty minutes?
Uh, we, we can. Or two, two or four times, we can.
How many times a day are you gonna change that sign is what I'm asking? It's gonna be changed every second, every ten seconds, it's gonna be changed twice a day? Depending, lunch, dinner, I don't know. I need an answer. You gotta speak up because we can't hear in this end.
Oh, you can hear me?
Yep, now I can.
Okay, you said four times a day.
Four times a day?
Yes, sir. And, and we can, I'm sorry, we can do like one time maybe a day, like, maybe we can do that too.
Maximum four? Up to four times a day? So there's gonna be no video on that at all?
No video, no.
Good. Alright, those are my questions. Uh, Mr. Cabeas?
I'm assuming by looking at this photograph that you gave us.
Yep.
That, that is not the sign you're gonna put on because it says, you know, TGF Fridays on it. Uh, so I'm assuming that this is just an example of what the sign might look like?
This is mine. Mine says lunch.
Yes, yes.
A little one.
Yes, yes, yes.
Do you have that one, Mike?
Yeah, I do, but what I'm saying is that thing that says lunch on it is not their sign.
Oh, no, no, no.
It's a different logo.
Yeah, it's a different logo.
It's a rendering.
It was a rendering of the size of the sign and it just.
That's why I wanted to ask.
Oh, yeah.
And so you're still gonna, so instead of just saying the name of your business, it's gonna say what? Lobsters for sale?
Yes, we can.
For sale, different prices, I mean, I don't.
Yes, yes, some single exactness.
Okay, because I'm not really crazy about four times a day in that intersection. That, just getting out of your parking lot is a, is a challenge. Okay, that's all I'm saying.
Thank you, Mr. Cabeas. Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, um, I, I, I don't see the need for a sign at that location. Um, that's, it's, it's isolated. It's the only business there. Um, it's not like they're trying to separate themselves from another business that's similar. I, and I have difficulty with, with signs in that tra- in that traffic circle, I apologize, I'm sorry.
Mr. Himmel?
I don't have too much of a problem with the sign, I do have a problem with it, uh, four times a day changing, and how, how many hours, when does it start and when does it shut off during the day?
Uh, at seven o'clock.
All right, you're gonna have to come closer or something, we can't hear.
I'm sorry, it's, um, we're gonna shut it off at seven o'clock.
What time is it turning on, the sign?
Eleven.
Eleven to seven, the sign be on, so it won't be on until the business is open? You won't advertise like, six in the morning, lobster's six ninety-nine?
Yes, something like that, yes.
And that's what I want to know, that's what we're asking.
I, I open, I open eight, eleven, and close seven P M.
Right, but how long's the sign gonna be on, because it's an electronic sign, is it gonna be on till seven at night, nine at night? I'm saying, if you have a lobster special.
Seven, seven at night, seven.
You would put your sign, say lobster special today, six ninety-nine, correct? And that would be on till whatever?
Seven, seven o'clock.
They're gonna have it on from?
So until we close, from eleven to seven, until we close.
Eleven to seven, that sign's gonna be on, okay?
Yes, sir.
So, you're testifying, you're gonna have it on from eleven A M. to seven P M. daily?
Yes.
Okay. Is that your answer, Mr. Himmel?
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Eight hours a day. Uh, everyone, any questions at all?
I see.
Yep, Mr. Chin?
Mr. Kamai, I kind, I echo Charlie's comments, I, I really don't see the need fundamentally for this sign, there are seven windows, all facing the street, there's also a large glass door facing the street, there are also two large signs at the top of the building that identify what the, what the restaurant sells, and, uh, I, I just think it's, uh, there's a fair amount of redundancy, having another sign on the door, the, the top of the door, I mean, I, I suppose if they, if they sell a lot of wholesale lobsters and the prices change every day, and people need to know what the price of a lobster is every day, um, maybe that goes to the issue of the need, but in terms of just having a sign there at that location, with all of the other spaces that, that are available for signage on the building and in the windows, I, I just, I have a hard time understanding the need for the sign.
This front is a, front is a interest door. The entrance door, above the entrance door. I just, I, I bought some rice, that's it, some picture.
I mean, you're right, you're right, Mr. Chin, about lobsters, I mean, daily, the, the boat price changes, this price changes, and it could change drastically in a week, so forty cents, which makes a buck more for him, so cost him no money, uh, I, I do get that, and, and my family was in this business, and I think it would have been nice to have a little sign that high above it, just to let the neighborhood know, today lobster's a five ninety-nine, you know, stop and shops advertising every week, six ninety-nine, seven ninety-nine, he's trying to make a buck on them, that's the only thing I could see, because when I drive down there all the time, those windows are on the right, sort of, you don't, well, maybe you do as you go around, but it's hard to see with the cars and stuff, that place that faces the street, that one sign, seven twenty-three, but that's just my two cents and how I, when I drive by it, I look to see if there is something like a special on lobsters, which you don't have on, on the windows or nothing that I see when I drive by it, that's just my two cents, but I get what you're saying, it's, it's, it's right there on the street, it's right on the street, right, because it goes right into this property and out, right?
Dimensionally, you're looking for a fifty-five inch TV diagonal measure?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I, I have nothing against a gentleman trying to make, earn a living, I know the restaurant business is a tough business, I just, um, fundamentally, I just had a hard time understanding why, why it was necessary.
Signs, I get it too, signs, I'm not a fan of signs at all, at all, I just, I mean, we got rid of most of those down on Washington Street, all those billboards and all that stuff, cleaning up the neighborhood, they were huge, I know, gigantic billboards. Most of them, one left, Quince, right, Quince is still, huh? Oh, that gone too? Oh, yeah. Yeah, I remember, right, that one, yeah. All right, let me, uh, continue, go to, uh, is there anyone that'd like to speak in favor? Anyone here wanna speak in favor? First call?
Not seeing any hand.
Second call. Third call closed. I have a letter here, seven, November fourth, twenty-twenty-one, seven twenty-one, seven twenty-three, Washington Street, case number ZB A twenty-one eighty-one, we have reviewed this middle for the above referenced project and have no comments, thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? First call? Second call? Third call?
No hand.
Uh, okay, I, I, everyone knows how I feel, uh, Mr. Kavais, comments?
I'm, uh, I'm a little torn because I, I, I don't really see the, the need for the sign, but then who am I to say that? I think it's in a bad traffic location.
Hmm.
Uh, and my comment before about having a hard time getting out of there is, is true, and I would hate to have, you try to get out of the parking lot while the guy in the rotary is looking at the sign, and not me, I wouldn't like that, um, I, I think I'm opposed to this.
Okay. Uh, Mr. O'Brien?
Likewise, I don't, I don't think we need the distraction for people in the rotary going up on the bridge.
All right, Mr. Chin?
I am not in favor for the reasons I gave earlier.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Himmel?
I don't have a problem with it.
Yep, and I don't have a problem with it, but, uh, it looks like it's not gonna pass, so would you like to withdraw without prejudice, or you wanna vote on?
Yeah, no.
Withdraw?
No, no.
So what do you want to do? Withdraw without prejudice?
Sorry, can you be definite?
Okay, withdraw? Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Kavais, grab a motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, man number twenty-one dash eighty-one, ask for Magali for a special permit variance to install a new LED outdoor advertising sign on the premises number seven twenty-one, seven twenty-three, Washington Street, I make a motion to withdraw without prejudice.
Second.
Madam Clerk, can we have, uh, a vote?
Yes, Michael Bayes?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yeah.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
John Himmel?
No.
Martin Nigan?
Yes.
Order one, just.
Yeah, withdraws, it's been withdrawn. Okay, it's been withdrawn? So it's like, we withdrew your petition, we withdrew your petition, so, so you didn't have to vote on it and say no, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further, further into tonight's. ZB A case twenty-one eighty-two, James Flaherty for variance to construct a new front porch on premises twenty-eighty-two Webster Street, Quincy, applicant or representative here?
Yes, how you doing, guys? Not too bad, yeah, I'm looking for permission to build, um, the front deck, it's roughly around hundred and thirty-two square feet, and we're gonna be keeping the existing, um, footprint for the steps into the house.
Mr. Flaherty, before you go on any further, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead.
All right, you wanna say that again?
Yeah. So I'm looking for a permission to, um, build a front deck, it's a hundred and thirty-two square feet, and, um, we're gonna keep the existing steps layout into the house.
Existing steps? Are you moving the steps out, or are you leaving those steps in?
Well, we're gonna rebuild them, yeah, but it's gonna be the same, um.
Oh, can't be, it's gotta be closer to the street, correct?
No, the porch can't be, closer to the street?
It has to be, it has to be closer to the street, wouldn't it? Oh, you're putting a new set of stairs on the other side, I see.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry. As a matter of fact, you're really shrinking. Right, you're shrinking, you're shrinking.
Yeah, correct, yeah, correct.
The frontage, you, you get more frontage from the street, okay, I have no questions. Kavais, some questions?
I have no question.
Uh, Mr. O'Brien, any questions?
Uh, not at this time.
Okay, Mr. Chin?
No questions yet.
Mr. Himmel?
No questions.
All right, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor? Anyone wanna speak in favor?
Not seeing any hand.
Second call? Third call closed. I have a letter here from BBW, November fourth, twenty-twenty-one, eighty-two Webster Street, case number ZB A twenty-one eighty-two, review the above reference project and have no comments, is there anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? Second call?
Not seeing any hand.
All our party hearing closed, I'll be voting in favor.
I'll be voting in favor.
Likewise.
Just confirming dimensionally, so you are going to shrink the front by six feet, right, because currently sixteen point eight, you're going down to ten point eight?
No, 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 what, those set of stairs are coming out, the other set of stairs come out, there's one, two, three and a half stairs that come out the front?
Yeah.
Those stairs are gonna be gone.
No.
Really, he's, he's making a, huh?
It's just to be rebuilt, in my plan.
Four to six feet off the front of the house.
Oh, you're gonna rebuild the set of stairs, I thought you were taking out those set of stairs.
No, they're rebuilt, I'm just gonna.
They're gonna push it closer down.
If you can see on the drawings, there is the existing.
Yeah, but you're gonna redo them, so we're gonna have to move out, right? You're gonna have it go in the sides? So you're gonna rebuild them exactly as they are, right there?
Yeah, correct, yeah.
So you're gonna have a rail on each side of the stairs.
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
All right, I thought it said, see, here, I thought I need a new set of contacts, I thought, yeah, ripping them out, and I see the seven, oh, nice, making more room, all right, so it's really the exact what it is.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Anyone else have any questions with that now? Same set of stairs are just gonna be, they're just rebuilt, and they're gonna have like, when you go up, you'll have a little pocket where you.
Correct, yes.
Put a foot on each side, two feet. Any other questions, anyone else out with that?
The porch is gonna be six feet closer to the street.
Yes.
Correct.
Now, there was a landing there before, right?
Yeah.
Now, yeah, all in all, the set of stairs aren't moving, just, they're building the deck a little bigger, correct?
Correct, yes.
Long, so they can get a set of stairs and come off the side of the house.
Yes.
Right. See what they're doing now, Charlie, I, that was my fault, I kept ripping them out, when I saw the line going straight across, I go, oh, they're gone, instead of stopping it and going. Any other questions, you got anything, anyone have any problems with that?
No.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Kavais, can we have a motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, a man number twenty-one dash eighty-two, James Flaherty for a variance to construct a new front porch on the premises number eighty-two Webster Street, I make a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
On the motion, standing none, Madam Clerk, can we have a voice vote?
Yep, Michael Bayes?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yep.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
John Himmel?
Yes.
Martin Nigan?
Yes.
Further into tonight. ZB A twenty-one eighty-four, Mohammed Al Zubadi?
Thank you, guys, thank you very much.
For finding variance, special permit floodplain, construct two additions to accommodate a two-car garage and living area on premises four seventy-nine Quincy Shore Ave. The applicant or representative here?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Rob Fleming from Fleming and Fleming, uh, thank you, uh, for hearing us, uh, this evening, um, I do represent the applicant and owner, Mr. Mohammed Al Zubadi, um, for four seventy-nine Quincy Shore Drive, um, the property itself, um, is roughly a ninety-five hundred square foot lot, uh, in the residence, a, um, zoning district, uh, currently improved by, um, a raised ranch, um, uh, style home, uh, with living area, you know, around fifteen hundred square feet, um, you know, uh, the style of home, you know, certainly makes it, it difficult for some living area where a lot of it, uh, is kind of in the, um, the lower, lower area, kind of basement area, uh, my client to accommodate his family, um, he is proposing, um, a, a couple of different additions, uh, one, um, if you look at the front of the home, uh, two, uh, the left-hand side, which currently exists a, an outside, uh, deck, and I think part of it is roofed as well, so that will be one addition there with some living, additional living area. Uh, secondly, uh, on the other side of the home, which will front, um, a portion of, uh, which will front Webster Street, uh, will be a, a two-car garage under, uh, additional living area, bedrooms, uh, specifically. So, eh, eh, this property itself, uh, is located, uh, as the board knows, uh, in, in a floodplain coastal storm, because it is right across the street from the ocean, Quincy Shore Drive, uh, we have appeared before the Conservation Commission, uh, on two occasions, uh, one, to really present the project to the Conservation Commission, um, the Conservation Commission, as they sometimes do, uh, uh, had a, a site visit of the property, uh, at the site visit, um, um, the, the Conservation Commission, as well as neighbors, uh, as well as, uh, Counsel Harris were there, uh, to talk things out, uh, I said, I didn't, not attend that myself, but it did, it could go well, uh, with me this evening, certainly my client, if you have any pointed questions for him, also, uh, an engineer, our engineer is Chi Man from Hardy Man, um, who has appeared before Conservation as well, so he can answer many of your questions with respect to, um, a number of things, but including, uh, the floodplain, uh, and how we're, um, you know, exceeding or complying with, uh, regulations by D E P, uh, so again, this evening, we are requesting from this board to do this, a special permit floodplain, a finding, um, for this expansion of this non-conforming residence, uh, as well as variance, uh, minor variances for, for setback relief, both the front of the home, uh, and to the, the garage side, uh, fronting Webster Street, um, if you have any questions for me at this point, I would, I would be happy to answer them, uh, otherwise I will, um, let Chi Man speak as well on this front, um, in addition, we, eh, we had a neighborhood meeting as well with the assistance of, uh, of Counsel Harris, um, obviously, some speaker, some people did speak with respect to some concern, um, because of the floodplain, um, and we're hoping, uh, I'm, I'm hoping this evening, and I know he will, Chi will, will discuss that with, uh, with this board, um, so if you have no questions for myself, um, I will, I will have Chi, um, take it from here.
I, I just, on, on the, on the garage, you're coming eight feet from the lot line on the other side.
Yeah, let me, if I could share my screen with the board as well.
It says proposed first floor plan, which is really the second floor, I believe, uh, because the bedrooms are over the garage, correct?
Uh, there, there is a bedroom over the garage, correct, that's proposed.
Right?
Uh, two bedrooms that are proposed, over, over the garage, the proposed garage.
So that's the second floor, not first floor, it says in the plan.
It's, that's difficult because of the style of the home, um, so you walk in, you go down to kind of the, the, um, so, kind of a subterranean level.
Right, right.
Um, so I think we're referring going up is, is the first floor.
But if you go, all right, so, so is, is that, what I'm saying, is the garage gonna go down, are you going down a half floor in the garage?
There's a little bit of a slope to Webster, is my understanding.
The garage is on gray.
Yep.
Garage is on grade?
Yes.
On grade.
So the, the, the bedrooms are going to be in the second floor, correct?
Yes.
All right.
Upper level, that's full level, the bedroom beyond the upper level.
Bedrooms, and that, that should be the second floor on that side, correct? We've got a half, so like, we go, we walk in, we walk down.
But, yeah, and important to understand, uh, you say second floor, however, the height of that roof is in line with the existing home.
No, I get it, I get it.
Okay. Uh, Chi, did, Chi, did you, could you please say a few words?
Uh, yes, um, if you can get off the share screen, I can share my screen and, uh, do a presentations.
Oh, yeah, let me, uh... Sorry about that.
Okay. So first of all, um, is the area of the site, and you can see seven, four seventy-nine Quincy Shore Drive, um. This is the locus, and this is Webster Street. Um, you can see on the left side of the house, there's a little, um, roof deck area, that's the additions on the left side of the, of the building. And... And then the, the other addition is actually, um, most of it is over the existing driveway. Switch to another screen here. So, um, a- again, this is the locus of the site, as, as, uh, a part application, we are in the, um, the site is in the flood zone. So, um, this is the, the Quincy GIS map showing the, the flood zone overlay, showing where the site is. And this is a site plan. I can zoom in to... Again, this is the proposed additions, um, on the left-hand side, face, facing on Quincy Shore Drive, and the two-car garage additions with the living floor upstairs is, uh, facing Webster Street, basically where the, uh, the existing paved driveway is. The additions total area, um, for living area is about eleven hundred square feet, and the garage is about seven hundred fifty square feet for additional area. Um, during the Conservation Commission process, we had some concern about, um, stormwater from the neighbor. So what we did to compensate any added impervious area is that we agreed to take out portion of the existing driveway to turn, turn into green space. So you can see that we have a net increase of green space, uh, to compensate any additional runoff from, from the proposal. So the, um, the project is not going to be, um, to generate additional, uh, runoff. And the, the addition is going to have, um, butt vents on at least two sides of, of the building, as shown here. They are calculated, the size is based on the, uh, FEMA regulations for the building code.
Yeah.
And some of the, during the, the approval process from the, um, Conservation Commission, uh, some of the neighbor have concern about the proposed in-ground pool on the ground level with, inside the additions. So what we did is we did some research, and basically, um, there are, um, you can see on the screen here is a different dock, um, surrounding the neighborhood, those are the identified pool that we find, and, um, we talked to the city. Basically, there's, we, we have not found any major cons, any concern about having pool in the fossil. Um, and we did some research also, there's only four arms of chlorine we are putting into the pool. So it's really not doing any harm to the neighborhood. And again, this is the, uh, floor plans.
Now, you've got an in-ground pool there, what, what is it made of?
It's basically concrete.
Concrete, okay.
That was, it's going to be ducked about four feet into the ground.
Yeah.
Um, and this is the existing plan of the floor plans, and again, the additions, um, as shown. The two-car garage, this is the bedroom, and this is a living, uh, the first row, the two-car garage, and, um, the pool in the basement on the additions on the other side. Um, and also, I want to show as part of the proposal, since we have to modify the building, um, we are also planning to raise the existing ceiling two feet, so the, the existing roof is going to come out and frame a new roof, um. The, the... The height is raising about two feet, and we do also have exhibit here. Um, I did measure the roof is about twenty, twenty-two and a half feet. The existing roof, we are adding two feet, and, and we also looked at the, um, the building next door to us, they are about twenty, twenty-eight feet high. So with the raising of the roof, we are still lower than the, uh, apartment buildings. And on this plan here, um, we also show the possible, the proposed setback is going to be eight feet, this is what we are asking for variance on, and, um, the apartment neighbor, um, building setback is roughly about eight feet or so. Um, and also, I just wanted to point that, oh, that I believe is two thousand and seven, um, the, the neighbor, neighboring property got a variance from this board, uh, to build these additions, um, closer to the property line as well. Um, and, um, I, I have my, um, client here, who wants to say anything?
Yeah, thank you so much. I am ready for any question.
So, um...
And, and, and Mr. Akins, if, if I may, Mr. Chairman, um, you know, a- again, as I had mentioned with the assistance of, uh, uh, of Councilor Harris, we did have a, we did have a neighborhood meeting, um, through the Zoom application, uh, which makes it a little, little more difficult. Uh, certainly, um, you know, they did convey some concerns, you know, I think Chi, you know, really spoke, uh, uh, with respect to that. Um, the original proposal as well, uh, the garage addition included, it was a little bit bigger. Uh, it was actually a little bit deeper into the rear yard. Um, so in consideration, um, not that it would have caused the, exacerbated any conditions down there with respect to stormwater, uh, my client, um, you know, did push that back, I think about ten feet, um, so removed about ten feet, um, of that proposed garage that was going deep, again, deeper into, um, into the yard, so, um, he, he hasn't ignored the concerns, um, he, he did make some, some modifications, uh, to, to the proposed addition, um, o- off the back of the home. Um, you know, this, this is simply a, a gentleman, a father, a, a husband, you know, trying to provide, you know, a nicer home. Uh, he's been here over eight years, here in the city of Quincy, uh, in this particular property. Um, you know, with the style, again, he's trying to provide some more living area. Uh, the pool is certainly different, you know, but I, I understand that his daughter, you know, special needs, it, it's really therapeutic for her as well. Um, so everything was, was, was thought hard by, by him and just really trying to provide for his family. As we all would hope, uh, to have a garage, to, to house your vehicles during our tremendous snowstorms, uh, is very important as well. I think the design, uh, with, with our architect and with Chi involved, um, I, I think, uh, did a, did a very good job.
Thank you. Uh, the only question I had was the pool, like, it's, it's a full cemented pool, correct?
Correct.
Well, they got, do they have a... Going to be a stainless inlay in there, or is it just going to be an all cement pool, all cement?
Okay, covered with ceramic.
It's concrete, uh, coupled with ceramic.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, is there any questions to the board? Mr. Vayas?
I have none at this time.
Mr. O'Brien, can you clear that screen, please?
My, my question starts with, how deep is you got to go to excavate to get the pool in? That's my first one.
Yep.
The pool is four feet, so it's basically get down to the bottom of the pool.
So you, you're going to excavate four feet on that side of the building to get the pool in?
Yes.
All right, so you're going down, and then you're going up two feet?
Uh, no, it's going, we are going down, four feet, basically, just like...
And then you're going, wait a minute, are you going up two feet from the existing roof?
The roof is raising two feet, and the, the, the ground, the pool is going underground, four feet.
Okay, so you're going six feet, you're going to be six feet bigger than you are today? Counting from the base of the basement to the top of the roof. Correct? Four down and two up.
Well, from the bottom of the pool, yes, four feet.
Okay.
And the top of the roof is six feet. I mean, top of the roof is two feet, so from the existing grade, we are raising two feet.
Okay. Now, the other, the other thing, the other question I have is you're going to seven bedrooms. Is that correct?
Seven?
With the potential for an eighth bedroom.
Six bedroom. We have three downstairs and three upstairs, six bedroom.
Yeah.
And... Three and three?
Yes.
And with the potential, like, family room, could easily convert it to another bedroom, I think.
Yes.
Um... What was the other one? And you're coming eight feet on the right. Is there pavement all the way to the property line on that side? Right now, I can't recall from my...
Right now, the driveway is all the way to the property line.
Yeah.
Okay. To the, to the property line on Webster Street.
Yes.
He said he's taking that out, he's coming back.
With a, with a grass strip?
Yeah.
That's correct, yeah.
Well, we're using that to just align with the garage doors.
Okay. All right, that's all the questions I got for now, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chin?
I just wanted to confirm on that, uh, where that grass strip is, you're going from a setback of thirty-six, thirty-four feet to what Charlie said is, uh, eight feet. And the neigh, the neighborhood, uh, the neighbor on that side has discussed that with you? The fact that you're going to be coming up to eight feet from the, from her border?
She's saying no.
She's saying no. Yeah, I'll wait to hear from the neighbor then on that. I just had a question about that, that setback to eight feet.
Okay. Uh... Mr. Himmel?
Just so I understand it, we're going from three bedrooms to six bedrooms?
Yes.
Minimum.
Thank you. That's...
Any questions at all, anyone? Mr. Chin?
I'm all set, thank you.
Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor? Anyone?
We do...
Angela Pointy?
Uh, we do have Karen Bloomquist, I'm not sure if she's in favor or not, her hand was raised first.
No, she's not.
She's in opposition, okay, Angela Ponti.
You can take that down, and we'll bring it back up next, next one, it's supposed... Angela Point?
Ponti, hi.
Ponti, sorry. Could you take an oath, please, Angela?
Yes.
Angela, you swear the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thanks.
Hi, my name is Angela Ponti, I live at four sixty-seven Quincy Shore Drive, and I live in the corner lot that's across the street from Mohammed and his family.
Yep.
Uh, I'm speaking in favor of the proposal, uh, mainly because I think that, uh, Mohammed and his wife are trying to provide for a special needs child, and this is why if, I know there've been some questions about a pool, like it's some kind of a luxury, but in this case, that's not the case, it's more therapeutic. And also, I just, that, he's been living there now, as I said, for eight years, and, uh, he's made a great investment in his home, and I think he's going to continue to invest well in the neighborhood, and I know he's trying to keep his family's interests, obviously a primary, but I know he's been trying to keep everyone else's, uh, interest at heart as well, so I wanted to speak in favor of the proposal as the across-the-street neighbor.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor? Second call? Anyone want to speak in favor? Raise your hand.
I'm not seeing any other hands or waves on screen.
Good call, all our party hearing closed. I have a letter here from the DPW. Dated November fifth, twenty twenty-one, four seventy-nine Quincy Shore Drive, case number DPA twenty-one eighty-four. We have ruled this, we have reviewed this middle of the above referenced project, our comments are as follows. Number one, specify how much impervious area we increase through the development. Two, provide plans showing the grading on, in new utilities, if any. Three, explain how the surface runoff will be discharged and treated. Four, upon completion of this project, as-built plans showing all utilities, building footprints needs to be submitted along with digital file. An elevation certificate should also be submitted if the property is in a flood zone, if there's anything further for these vibes. All our party hearing closed. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? It was, uh, Karen?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we actually had, uh, Katie Carey, um, send a chat request first, and then we'll come to Karen Bloomquist in that order.
All right, go ahead. What's the chat request?
Hi, before you start, you swear the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate this time to be able to speak on behalf of the neighbors, um, the butters. Um, I know that one, um, neighbor across the street did get up and speak, uh, on behalf of the family, and yes, there's a special needs child living in that home. I've known the family and advocated for that student for multi, many, many years, um, as an administrator in the Special Education Office. I definitely look out for every student, um, including our friend that was here earlier, Mr. McCarthy, who I've taught those children as well. So, and just as a, a side note, I have lived in my house for forty-seven years, um, here as an abutter. My father built this house on twenty-four telephone poles so that we could continue to avoid the shrinking or sinking because we are on a water, you know, a, a flood plain. Um, you know, and I, I told the story, I did a full presentation, it was probably a fifteen-page PowerPoint presentation, talking about the difficulty that we have on Webster Street with the flooding, and how we have flooding in front of the house and in behind the house. Um, and I know that my neighbor Karen will also speak on those points. Um, but we do have concerns about how the water table changes when built, building has happened. We had a, a house, two houses down in the middle of the flood area that, um, built up a little bit of space on their driveway, which again dispersed a lot of the water that we collect in heavy rains. Now, it's typically, I can tell you right now, since, um, twenty sixteen, I have thirteen photograph times where we have had from the end of four seventy-nine, all the way halfway up Webster Street where we have flooding. And I know this is a flooding thing, and we went through the water, um, difficulties, and they kept saying it's about the flow, but this is actually water that collects and then ends up in all, the majority of the homes on our street, related to the, the amount of weight that is on this surface and the people not respecting the land around us. I think that this is a pretty hefty, um, request that has been, again, it was changed again, um, since we did the meeting with the Water Conservation Commission, um, there have been changes. The, the roof was not already going up by, um, by two feet. That was not part of that original project that we even discussed at the meetings on the street, or the meetings with Water Conservation. Um, and the, the, the pool was supposed to be above ground, and they were not going underground, um, when we originally saw that plan. So there's been changes in, and changes, and none of which are for the, um, abutters benefit. I feel like that's more growth and more pressure on the overall area. Um, I do not agree that having eight feet between our windows and their garage is going to benefit anybody anyways. I know that view is, is not essential, but I'm just saying that I actually have access to my backyard right there. And, yeah, so we'd be able to reach out and basically touch their house instead of, and this is technically the back of their home, so actually the zoning should be reflected the back of their home, which is actually much more. I'm sorry?
Did you just get it? Did you, were you here for a permit, uh, for a... Uh, for variance on your home to go closer to the back side setback?
I, I did not, that was the pre, previous owner, which was my father, I did not do that.
Oh, okay, so your family did that, okay, I just wanted to know.
Yep, no, I didn't do that.
Alright.
I bought the home in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, so I didn't have anything to do with that. Thank you. So, um, that being said, I, I do think that there's also, this is also the flow that could go underneath that addition. There's nothing under it, so there's actual flow to go under the addition if we're talking about my house anyways. And this is a two-car garage with two bedrooms above it, on a driveway. And then an addition on the side, um, so I just think it's an awful lot of builds. I think, I think maybe even one of the builds would be appropriate, maybe a garage without the, the information above it, but I just think it overall is encompassing of that corner, and it's also gonna be, you know, we're not gonna be able to see coming down the street. Um, which right now is already a problem with people flying down Webster Street, um, all the time. So I think that overall, we have an awful lot of concerns, we've talked um, about the water difficulties, we've talked about how it is just overpowering, um, I, I very much care for the family.
It's causing us stress.
It is, it's causing our family a lot of stress. I, my father built this house, I really don't want all that water in my basement because they changed the flood plain of this street. Um, we've worked diligently to keep that from happening. So I have, I have a lot of concerns, I'm trying not to just kind of go off topic and, um, but we have made it abundantly clear that we think this is above and beyond what needs to be done for our little friend. Um, and when Dad came to us about it, he told us the garage was for his bad back. So we did not think that this was in relation to his daughter at all. So, um, you know, I, I know there's push and pushback, but I, I feel like myself, my neighbors, we have an awful lot of difficulties with this happening, and everybody has cracks in their walls related to all the problems related to the flooding on the streets, and they've had to repin, pin their foundations. Um, everybody can tell you, if you were to communicate with the majority of the abutting neighbors that have to deal with the flooding and the difficulties related to this, if this causes any more problems for any of us, there's gonna be litigation, we, we are not gonna hold back on that, I am very, very passionate about this home. My family is here, and I, I just, I, I'm, I'm gonna pin it there, thank you.
Alright, thank you very much, is there anyone else opposed or undecided? Karen? Bloomquist, unmute her, please. And could you take an oath, please?
I will.
Alright.
I really swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you guys?
I do.
You have the floor.
Thank you, and thank you for the chance to speak to you, my name is Karen Bloomquist, I live at eighty-eight, excuse me, eighty-eight Appleton Street, and I share approximately a thirty-five linear foot boundary with the applicant. Um, the, the engineer was quick to show you a map of the flood plan, uh, the flood plain, excuse me, which I suspect in general you're familiar with, you know that both sides of Quincy Shore Drive are in the flood plain. But he didn't mention that there's an unusual jog in the flood plain as it relates to Appleton and Webster Streets. The flood plain takes a turn at Quincy Shore Drive, up Appleton Street on the, uh, even side of the street for nine house lots. Goes over to Webster Street, nine house lots on the odd side of Webster Street, and four house lots on the even side of Webster Street. We are all one hundred percent in the flood plain. This property is also one hundred percent in the flood plain. The reason for this is that there's a saltwater culvert underneath our properties that comes from Quincy Bay and runs up into Appleton and Webster Streets. We have an extremely high water table, our backyard's pond, our basement's flood. Ironically, the night that Mr. Fleming brought this matter in front of the Conservation Commission the first night, there was torrential rain, uh, happening outside. And the next morning, the houses at eighty-four Appleton and seventy-eight Appleton each had eighteen inches of water in their backyards, it took two days for that water to dissipate. It's, it's not something that we're, um, that we're unfamiliar with. It's not something that the city is unfamiliar with. The city installed a pump at seventy-five Webster Street. It's city-owned and city-operated, and it's an attempt to help mitigate the water problems and the flooding problems. The city also, I understand, if, if you look at the, the aerial photograph of this area, you'll see that very oddly, our houses are sited almost on the street. We have very little frontage, we have almost all backyards. And again, my understanding is that this was required of the builder by the city in order not to disturb or to minimize the disturbance to the water table. Um, so we're all aware of this, I assume the appellant is aware of it, he's certainly aware of it after the last two months, because he's been hearing us talk about it for ten weeks or twelve weeks. But nevertheless, he's asking you to shoehorn these two large additions into this relatively small lot.
A lot, a lot, so you do know is over nine thousand square feet.
I do. And I know that a piece of it belongs to DCR, he has no control over that. I know that, that his, his, the style of his house has an elongated footprint. Um, and, and he's talking about adding to that, he's taking away permeable land. And we have no.
But it's not a little lot, say it was a little lot, huh, look.
I understand, I, I understand there are other parts of Quincy where this would be considered, uh, a pretty substantial lot. Uh, my concern is what's underneath the lot, and we have no idea what will happen when the excavation happens. I'm told that even to build on grave, they have to dig a minimum of four feet below the frost line. We don't know what that will do, none of us know what will that, that will do to our basements or our yards, and these may be things that can't be fixed after the fact, the damage may be done, as Katie has pointed out, we already are dealing with basement problems and water problems and ponding problems and so forth. My concern is that there, there was, one last thing, there was a reference to how many pools there are in the area. I don't believe any of them are underground in-house pools. These are people's outdoor pools, completely different game than this, where they're talking about an inside pool. And again, who knows what the excavation will do to any of us. I, I know that you, boards like this act on precedent, and I know that, that uh, someone says, well, this happened at such and such a place, and that happened at such and such.
That, that, that's not this board.
I, I would like to.
Every project, I will interrupt, every project is a complete different project, everything has its own circumstances.
And I appreciate that, the point I wanted to make was, the precedent I would ask you to look at is the Beach Comer site. The city figured out that building on the Beach Comer site was bad for that entire neighborhood. It, the, the same has to be true all the way along Quincy Shore Drive. This whole area has been identified as a, as a critical environmental concern. The, the state, it has a program underway where they're planting trees to try to help deal with the flooding problems and the water problems that we have. This is not the right project for this particular piece of property.
Alright, if you can wrap it up, please.
As, sure, as we talk, sorry, like Kat, like Katie, I get very passionate about my home.
I know, and I don't blame you.
As we told the neighbor the day of the community meeting, which I would not agree with Mr. Fleming was a particularly, went particularly well. Um, since all of the neighbors that were opposed, who attended the meeting, but in any case. Um, the, the, the point is that, that we need to be proactive, we need to be thinking about resiliency. We need to be thinking about, uh, where the city is headed, where we're headed with this most incredible natural resource that we have. And we should be making those decisions accordingly, and so I would ask you, please, do not allow this to happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else opposed or undecided?
Yes, Marty, we have, uh, Council Mahoney, followed by Citizen Roy.
Counselor?
Evening again, thank you very much, I just wanted to voice my opposition for this, um, because of the, the the flood zone and because, um, proving, proving this is a hardship, it sounds like there's, there's definitely some things there, but it's very, very large. And more importantly, the neighbors will be more in a hardship in this particular case because of the flood zones. We have to be really conscientious of what we're doing when we're allowing certain developments to happen, and I know you do take all of these things into consideration. So I just wanna thank you for the time, and thank you for consideration, this is the wrong project in the wrong area, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, John back yet? Sorry to get back. Mr. Roderfeld, take an oath, please.
I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you guys?
I do.
Thank you.
Um, I was downstairs, I wasn't listening to the beginning of this, but, um, when I was just going over the maps. I'm actually, the question I have is this, is they're, um, just adding an addition on and keeping it a single family?
Yes.
Um, and, and what, how much square footage are they adding onto the house?
They're gonna twenty-six by twenty-nine addition for the garage. And then they're putting a four-foot green ground pool in a twenty-four by sixteen.
And, and you were saying that the, I, I checked out the lot, the lot's over nine thousand square feet, it's like.
Twenty-five hundred.
So, um, I mean, uh, uh, can I still speak in favor or can, you know, cause I, I am in favor of this project? Because there, it's residential A, people in residential A have the right to make their houses nicer. That's a small house, it's a beautiful lot, um, you know, a homeowner has the right to, to build something nice there. They just passed, um, a regulation making people not being able to do Airbnb in residential A. So the people who live there are gonna be protected by this new zoning, which I actually am against, I, I don't really even agree with that, but that's just for another point.
That's another point, John, yeah?
The, the main thing is that someone who, the property taxes are, are very expensive, and I would expect three thousand square foot houses or big houses out there, what's gonna happen is zoning might change in the future. And if you don't allow this applicant to build, um, a big one-story or one-family house there three, four, five years from now, maybe there will be a duplex or six units or possibly twenty-one units there. So I think it's a good idea to let the homeowner keep it a single-family home. I don't think it really matters what their use is for, or what their, you know, to say it's for this family members or for this. I don't think that really makes a difference, I think what makes a difference is that they have the right to do that, and I'm for it, thank you.
Thank you, John, is there anyone else opposed or undecided, and John's notes will go into, in favor?
We have, uh, David Jacob.
Mr. Jacobs, take an oath, please.
You swear, uh, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you guys? Where'd you go?
Jacobs?
Yes, yes, yes.
Alright.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep, you swear to tell the truth?
I do. Gets me in trouble sometimes. Um, I wanna speak in favor of this project, I do not know this person. And I do know the site though, as I drive by it all the time. Um, he's lived here for eight years, he's a member of this community, a neighbor next door has spoken in favor of it. Uh, he does have a rather large lot. Um, you know, I don't know what, I know he's building a garage, I don't know if there's any way to make the sur, I know he's gonna have to do some type of foundation around the, the southern and western sides of the of the structure, but I mean, can't the, can't the garage floor be a permeable surface, like can't they just have like crushed stone in there? You know what I mean, so that way, I mean, if it's gonna flood there, it's gonna flood, whether or not it's a concrete floor, if it's a, if it's a crushed stone floor, so I could just put crushed stone in there. If, if that's, if that's such an issue.
Yep.
But I speak in favor of this project, I, you know, I, I feel for him, I, I have, you know, um, family members with disabilities and, you know, I, it seems like he's just trying to do something for his child, I mean, I don't know this child from a hole in the wall, it could be a situation where this child's gonna spend the rest of their life with, with this parent, and if you're staring that down, that, that can, and again, I don't know this child, but if that's the case, that, you know, you wanna have space, and maybe they wanna build with that child and, and make them feel like they have some type of independency in their, in their adulthood, so I, I'm, I think that's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs, is there anyone else, be noted that Mr. Jacobs will also be noted in the, in favor?
Jacobs, I don't know if you wanna hear from one of the applicants here, Chi Man?
What, what is?
The engineer Chi Man wants to speak.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Yes, uh, I just wanted to reiterate that, um, the design of this, the, the foundation is going to have butt vent. That this is, it's going to be, allow the butt water to flow through the foundation, the first floor to be flooded, so it's not taking away any of the butt storage. Um, just if there's any concern about the, um, you know, the, the new addition taking out any butt volume. And also, I want to point out that, um, one of the neighbor point out, there's a culvert taking water in from the, from the old, uh, Quincy Bay. There is a pipe, eighteen-inch pipe that was kept by the city, which terminate at the back of sidewalk. It used to go down between the houses into the low area between Appleton and Webster Street to drain the water out, but the city, the city sometime ago kept that pipe. And you saw the pump station, uh, behind seventy-five, uh, Webster Street. So, there's no, no longer seawater is coming in from the culvert into the area. Just want to clarify that.
And you're saying you have floodgates on your, uh, foundation?
Yes, and, you know, um, as, as, you know, the city spent million of dollars, um, or um, update the flood map in this area.
Right.
Um, the flood map I show is from the city, it's not from me. I'm just want to make sure you understand.
Yep.
What, what we, what we show you is from the FEMA, it's not from us. And if the owner wants to add a couple.
Thank you so much, uh, I just want to say that, uh, at the beginning, I thought it is a regular permit. So I applied for it, and the, the building department asked me, because it is in a flood zone, I have to follow specific rules. And, uh, therefore, I went to one of the best companies regarding that, and they directed me how to fix this problem, you know, therefore, we have to put flood, uh, flood vents and the size of it, the location of it, designed by specific engineers, I could not do that myself. This is number one, number two, uh, the flood itself is a disaster. And everybody cares about it, because just like hurricane, just like storm, just like anything else. So when I did, when I applied for this one, I have to notify all the neighbors within three hundred diameter, three hundred feet diameter. Moreover, Councilor Harris sent letters to the whole neighborhood under the word six, not only the three hundred feet diameter, but whole neighborhood. I have tens of people came to my house knocking the door, asking about the project. So when I accepted, most of them, they thought it is condominium or building, uh, or apartments building or something. When they understood it's just a car garage and, uh, just addition to the site, they, they said, we are with you, and we supporting your project. And, uh, because the flood is a disaster, nobody would accept it. So when I see in this meeting, and even in the zoning meeting, two neighbors only oppose that, that means the other hundreds are okay with my, my project. Uh, I mentioned, uh, earlier that many people knock my door, and they say, good luck with that, we are support you. In addition to that, as a, as a friendly way, I knocked the door of four neighbors, they are attached to my house. I did not want them to receive the letter by, by mail or something, that would be just someone, uh, weird, you know? I knocked the door myself and asked the neighbor, my friend, I will do addition to my house. And I hope you, you will be better, but I work for two months or three months of, nobody likes construction, you know? So I want to do it a friendly way, and everybody was okay, on, only the uh, Kerry family, they have concern, and therefore, I changed the whole design at the beginning, it was completely different than this one. My wife asked me to change it for them, so I, the whole design in the beginning was kind of fills the whole backyard, because I cannot touch the, the front size, uh, front side of my house, because there isn't. So I put big addition to the backside. My wife asked me to change it, and therefore, I put the stairs going from first floor to second floor. Instead of enter the house from the sliding door in the back of the side. So I cut mostly more of the backyard in, uh, in order to let them have view or have, you know, space. So that, everything I could do, and, uh, if there's any question, I have a good answer.
Alright. Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have username Beaston.
Alright, unmute him, we can take notes. Anita, is Anita up there for this guy, I haven't seen her speak yet?
Yeah.
Beaston? Is it Beaston?
Yes.
Beaston, okay, could you take? Beastin, okay, could you take an oath, please, Mr. Bass?
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Alright, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate the board listening to me.
Name and address, please?
Yeah, who's your stemmen? Eleven Sun Valley Drive, Braintree.
Okay.
I, I built eighty-five Webster Street.
You built what?
According to code. Inspector.
You built what address, I didn't hear you?
I built eighty-five Webster Street.
Okay, alright.
Hey, I'm old, I'm tired, and you know, you might, I might be redundant, so correct me, sir. Okay, as you go along. But you know what, I did pains to build this place, I put polyethylene down because of the water. I built it on twenty-six telephone poles, eight, eight feet in, uh, circumference. Around, around, and I built two on a porch, two on, on the deck. I mean, I went great pains because this was reclaimed land. You don't know, if you don't know, if you came from Quincy, but the beach was up like about a half a block where I built. Are you listening to me?
Yes, I hear you, and they put the road in, go ahead, I was there, I drove that road.
Yeah, well, I don't see you, and I'm, I'm just, I'm just wondering if you listen.
I'm reading plans right now, and I'm going over books and plans.
I don't give a shit, you wanna talk to me?
You're talking to all the board.
I'm talking to all of you, and you know, you're not listening.
I am listening.
Okay, I have a dry basement there. I have a dry basement there, I built it nineteen.
If I wanna look at a plan while I run this meeting, I will, sir, thank you very much. I think you're really rude. Go ahead. Go ahead. Hang up?
No, I gotta get him to unmute one more time, hold on.
I'm getting too old for this stuff.
You, you have the ability to unmute yourself if you'd like to speak again.
You're gonna speak, you're gonna unmute, you're up.
No, I, I'm sorry, uh, thank you for your time, we'll, uh, we'll stay quiet, thank you.
Thank you, is there anyone else? While our party hearing closed. Uh, comments from the board, uh, I, I I think he's got a beautiful property there, you know what floods is flood, it's water is water. And you've got floodgates, that's why they have those flood, flood panels. So if anything comes in, it just goes right through. You know, dissipation I get, but, you know, the eight feet from the lot line kinda bothers me with rooms above it. That bothers me, uh. So, I'm not in favor of the, the, the going, you know, garage, fine. The bedrooms above it, no, because you, number one, you're eight foot from a lot line, and you just impeded on those people that own that property over there, which I know they got a variance years ago. But, you know, it's gonna start looking like South Boston here, we're gonna pass the sugar, and I don't think that's fair to a neighbor that has, that has that look already, and, and, and she bought that house not knowing how it went before, and that's just my two cents, uh, the pool is what it is, it goes in, it, it, it's not gonna, there's floodgates everywhere, that, that water moves, and that little thing is not gonna cause, you know, this, this big attack on that street, it's not, uh, but I'm not in favor of the bedrooms above the, uh, the garage, I just think it's impeding on the neighborhood being eight feet, that's my two cents, Mr. Cavazos?
I think there's too many bedrooms. I just think that there's too many bedrooms and not enough parking, uh, that's, you know, the only place to park is up on Webster Street.
Alright, so you, you're not in favor, you are in favor of it?
I'm not in favor, I'm not in favor.
Okay. Uh, that's why I didn't want the bedrooms gone myself, uh. If the bedrooms are gone, I, I, I would, I would be in favor of that proposal. Uh, Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, I'd, I'd prefer to see an open concept, uh, garage in there, I'm not, I don't like the idea of it, um, of, of that area in there being covered. Um, it's, it's, it, the flooding seems to be getting worse in that whole area, so, um, with, with adding more, I wouldn't mind the, um, idea of the pool up on the side on the high point, but the back end of it, I'm opposed to. I'd be voting no.
Okay, Mr. Chin?
I do think that it's, um, too much for that location, given, um, water, given the tides, um, I don't think that it's gonna get better with climate change down there, I think that there's a detriment to the neighborhood, which we've heard of tonight. Um, and so if this, if this project was scaled down, I might consider it again, but I, I don't like the eight-foot um, setback when, um, it was thirty-four. So for those reasons, I would, I would vote against it.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Hamel, or there is?
Um, I don't like the proposed garage addition either, I think it's too close, I think it's too much, I think the bedrooms on top of it are too massive. I don't have a problem with the addition to the left of the building, the pool under, and extending the house over that, but the back garage, it's too much, and you're right. That area is sustaining more and more flood every year, uh, it's too much.
Alright, uh, Mr. Fleming?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, you know, we, we certainly listened to every member, um, I did have an opportunity to speak to my client briefly, you know, on, on some options, available options, and what he would like to do. Um, we would respectfully like to request, um, a, a continuance um, to, with a potential to maybe revise plans a little bit, um, specifically with the garage addition, I think.
Okay.
Um, if, uh, if we, I think it wouldn't take us a ton of time, so if we're able to, to get on for the December fourteenth hearing date.
No, that ain't gonna work, we, we, we jimmed it already, what do you got for January?
January eleventh?
January eleventh?
January eleventh, okay.
Twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, uh, Mr. Cavazos, we have a motion to move this till January eleventh, twenty-twenty-two.
Hearing of Madam number twenty-one dash eighty-four, Mohammed Al Tabari, for a finding variance special permit floodplain to establish two additions to a probably two-car garage in living areas on the premises number four, seventy-nine Quincy Shore Drive, and make a motion to continue the hearing until January eleventh, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
On the motion, CNN Madam Quirkin, we have a voice vote, and I wanna speak to the people before you leave.
Mike Cavazos?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes, sir.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
John Hamel?
Yes.
And Martin Aiken?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilor, when could you get those plans down to, uh, fifty-five C Street, within three weeks, four weeks?
Maybe three weeks.
Three weeks?
Yeah.
Marty, I need five.
Huh?
I need five.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, uh, so I, I just want the neighborhood so they could stop at C Street, get a set of plans if they wanna talk about it, we're gonna show them everything, you're gonna change anyway when you come back. So that meeting will be January eleventh, twenty-twenty-two, you can look right on the website and get the info to, to how to, uh, log on again, this meeting's been continued, we told them, you know, I guess a lot of us don't want the garage, some of us do want, I don't care about the garage, but no bedrooms in the side, they're looking at it, it's okay, so just, uh, you know, do this whole thing again with a new set of plans, January eleventh. Just so you all know.
I did, yeah.
Alright, just so everyone knows, we're gonna take five, and we'll get right back.
Okay, thank, thank you, happy Thanksgiving.
Last thing on the list tonight, GBA twenty-one eighty-five, JCBT Architect for Special Permit Floodplain Variant to demolish the existing single-family and detached garage and build a new three-story two-family structure with a two-tiered detached door at the premises number ten, inside Billings Road. Is there applicant or representative here?
Bonnie.
Bonnie?
Hi. Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Bonnie.
Bonnie, yeah, could you please take an oath?
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you guys?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, see. Share my screen first. Uh. Okay. My client's looking to rebuild this, uh, currently is this existing single-family, one-story. Uh, is sitting on a seven thousand square feet lot. And also, there's a hardship, there's a underground, currently underground broke on the driveway, from the front of the property to the rear. And my client's looking to relocate the building, further giving an extra two feet to the side, left side yard setback.
Say that again?
Sorry?
I didn't hear you.
Currently, the side, left side yard setback is two-point-four feet.
Yeah.
We're giving it five feet, so moving the building toward the right side more.
Alright.
And matching the front yard of the existing and encroach the rear yard a little bit, so we're seeking uh, existing non-conforming lot, also the side yard setback in FAR plus, uh, some dimensional requirement too.
What? The two-family, correct?
Two-family, yes, exists currently is a single-family.
Yeah.
Unit one on the first floor is, will be a two-bed, two-bath, fourteen-hundred square feet. Unit two, uh, which has second floor and third floor. It's a three-thousand square feet unit. That's the front.
Yeah, it is, second and third floors, one unit. They got an office there. That could be four bedrooms, correct?
Uh, unit two is four bedroom, unit one is two bed.
Right.
Unit two will be owner occupy. And because it's in a floodplain, so there's no basement, just flow through in the crawl space.
Well, that second unit could, could be side bedrooms, because that office is big enough for bedrooms, correct?
Yeah, I mean, if it's an issue, we can remove those, uh, open up that wall. Uh, okay. This. We can remove that wall.
Is that it?
Yep.
Okay, uh, my question is, why doesn't he need a three-thousand? He's the owner now, but he won't be for life. Three-thousand square feet unit on that lot.
The daughter is looking to, um, marry. So she is gonna, she's occupying that second floor unit to herself.
Wait. Is she gonna be the owner?
She is the part-owner with the parent.
Alright.
So the parents are gonna be in the first floor?
Uh, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Might be the parent on the second, and the daughter is on the third floor. Probably unit one is for rental.
How many, how many units is this again?
Just two.
Just two?
Just two.
You're thinking it sounds like three?
No, it's two.
Saying the daughter would live in the third floor.
As is part, you, third floor is part of the unit, is the second floor unit.
Okay, okay.
Except, a four-bedroom, maybe five bedrooms.
Yeah, we can open up, we can open up that office, no problem, if that's an issue.
Yeah, it might be.
Yeah.
And in the space?
I'm sorry?
Is that it for questions?
Uh, no, I would like to see that open, by the way, though.
That's fine, yep, we can remove the office.
Thank you, that's it.
You're welcome.
Did you, did you call my name?
Mr. O'Brien?
What, you want questions, not right now, I'm good.
Okay, Mr. Chin?
Yeah, thank you, um, Bonnie, I had a question, I know you're moving the building over to the right. Can you move it anymore, uh, can you move it further over to the right than you already have there, towards that driveway?
There is currently a broke underground right here, this dash line, it's already close enough with that setback. The owner would love to move it over more if he could.
I'm just looking at the neighborhood, those houses are pretty small, um, right now, and this is gonna be a pretty big structure. If you're only five feet from the line, um, it's gonna be pretty tight over there. Understanding that there's a driveway on the other side of this, but, but, um, I mean, two-point-one feet currently to five feet, uh, it'd be great if you could give that a little bit more breathing room over there on the left.
We can, I think if we set, if we set it back a little bit, I think we can and, you know, looking in, putting it over here more.
Where is the broke?
If you go towards the back.
The broke is right here, if you see this twenty feet wide
Yeah.
eastman, it's actually coming along. So.
So you can move this back and over.
Right, so right now is probably looking at more like six feet to the edge of the broke.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if you move it back, go back.
Move back.
And over, like there, yeah, like.
Yeah, right over here.
There it's to the garage.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, since you're removing, you're removing the garage, you could go back ten feet and then move it over.
Move the garage over.
Or six feet, yeah.
Yeah, we can, yeah.
I'd like to see that, just to give this a little bit more space from the street and from the side, if you can do that.
Okay, sure.
Of course, we would like a mini parking as we can, like, if you get, so that, you can almost triple-park if you had a potty, correct?
Yeah.
Three back each, somehow we could make that work with the
Okay.
One, two, one in each in the garage. Each unit would have, and then they'd have two, and they could have two, you could almost have six cars there. You know, it's tandem parking, but you got three stations per unit. Uh, Mr. Hamel?
Yeah, I like the idea of moving the garage a little bit, pushing the building back and to the right, go back a little bit, you can avoid the, uh, encroaching on the, uh, on the broke.
Yeah.
Give your neighbor to the left a little more relief, and actually get more parking if you move the garage over four or five feet, six feet. And opening up that office space will give you more of an open concept for that, uh, that second unit.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it, Bonnie?
Yes.
Okay, is there anyone wanna speak in favor? First call?
I do have a hand, a Laurie S.
Laurie S., you in favor?
I'm not, I live.
You can hold off, you can hold off, and I'll get back to you, anyone else in favor of this project? Just makes it tough going back and forth, and then the clerk's gotta redo that part as well. Save the movement. Alright, second call?
Not seeing anything else.
Third call, call our party hearing closing, anything from the DPW staff? There we go, the laundry list. November fifth, twenty-twenty-one, two ninety-five Billings Road, case number ZB A twenty-one eighty-five. We reviewed it. Above reference, Sniddle, our comments are as follows, specify how much impervious area would be increased due to development. Two, provide plans showing the existing site conditions, layout of utilities, grading and drainage. Three, explain how the surface runoff will be discharged and treated. Four, upon completion of the project as-built plan showing all utilities, building footprints needs to be submitted along with digital file. An elevation certificate should also be submitted to properties in a flood. An elevation certificate should also be submitted to the property in a flood zone. Anything else, please advise. Is there anyone opposed or undecided now? Laurie S.
Yes, uh, as someone who lives within a block of the.
Uh, Laurie, 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 do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, not the truth, to help you guys?
I do.
Okay.
Um, I live within a block of the proposed, um, building. And for such a narrow lot, to have a three-story building that is well outside the bounds of what is currently within the neighborhood. Everything that is a two-family is a two-story, maybe with an attic, but certainly not with a third floor. Within the neighborhood, and that is far exceeding the bounds of what the neighborhood, um, the, the vision of the neighborhood is. And I'm concerned about the resale value long-term. Because while it may be a family that wants to put it up with four bedrooms in the second unit, that is well beyond the bounds of a two-car garage. Uh, even with, uh. Parking. Multiple cars within a garage, you and I both know they're gonna take up street spots. Uh, so I am highly concerned about the three-story, not the two-family, but the three-story and the two-car garage. That is not in keeping with the neighborhood.
Thank you. Anyone else opposed or undecided?
Yes, we have Lyce and Hugh, followed by Jen Santry.
Okay. Take an oath, please.
Hi, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, not the truth?
Yes, I do.
Alright.
I'm, I'm strongly objects to, uh, I live on one forty-two Hampton Circle, right behind the, uh, this proposed project site. And I'm strongly objects to this project, just by looking at the drawing. They're showing that the FAR of that site is supposed to be point four, but they're trying to build up to point six four. So basically, their building is, uh, currently their design is four, forty-five hundred square feet, they're proposing. But they only supposed to allow about twenty-eight hundred square feet building. So they are overbuilt sixteen hundred square feet of building at that site. According, according to their current footprint, so their proposal is supposed, is a one-story extra oversized. Allowed by zoning. So per zoning, this building is. At least fifty percent oversized, it's way too big for this.
Yeah.
This location, and all the building around it is about one or two-story, and this building will be like. Setting a really bad example for this whole neighborhood. And really affecting the well-being of all the neighbors. And, um, it affect the, the privacy of the, the neighbors, it affect the view of the neighbors. And it also affect, uh, affect the sunlight that your neighbor can get.
Yeah.
Um, besides that, it's a brand-new building, a tick-down building we built. As a designer, I think, um, I think, and I'm just assessing that, the designers are able to. Build a buil, design a building that meet all the zoning requirements without any, um, variant needed. So, but being said, the building will not be the same if they need to meet all the zoning requirement. That the building will be a lot smaller, but that is what the zoning require. So, for this neighborhood, so I hope that, uh, uh, I think furthermore, I also object the, um, the parking garage. I don't see why they need to build a parking garage, and the parking garage is totally into, like, um, it. Uh, sort of violate the backyard and side yard, uh, uh, requirements. And there's no reason that the, uh, the garage must be there for the project's sake. So for the zoning requirement, that that should be gone too. So from my pers, from the, uh, from my perspective as a neighbor, I strongly oppose that, and I think. A, a, this project really, like, set a really ba, bad example, so any people can come in and build a giant building for their own benefit. And sacrificing all the neighbor's well-being.
Okay.
I dislike, so, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else opposed or undecided?
Yes, we have Jen Santry, followed by Counselor Mahoney, and then Anita.
Santry, take an oath, please.
Hi, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and not the truth, to help you guys?
I do.
Thank you.
Um, my name is Jen Santry, excuse me. I live at, uh, three oh four Billings Road. I live across the street from the opposed, um, building. I am against it. Um, we're a main street, but we're the, a community. Um, our houses are very close together, we all know each other. And like with the winter snowstorms, all the cars have to come off the road and. You know, with the one-story, sometimes it's hard enough for everyone to get on, like, in the driveway. If you have a three or four new second-floor unit and they rent it, it could be three or maybe even six cars if the person has a significant other. Um, it would just be a lot of cars in a one, like, section area. Um, and when also, something I noticed was on the plans. There's a sewer right between their house and their flooding house to the right. So if you were to move the driveway, I think it would be driving over the sewer. Drainage. Um, so just with the driveway that, you know, everyone's like, oh, you can just move it over, but I think this space wouldn't allow it.
Oh, yeah, that would all be looked at to make sure they could be able to do that, if, if anything that appears, could happen. Make sure that, yeah, that wouldn't ever happen. I mean, they could run over the sewer, but they can't run over. You know, but there's a broke. Alright, thank you very much. Thank you for your time. Anyone else opposed or on the stand? Anita, oh, Counselor Mahoney, you're up.
Counselor Mahoney, Anita, and then Counselor Fay.
Counselor Mahoney?
Thank you, um, once again. Um, when looking at the, the, the current, the current site and the proposal, it's just, it's, 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 it's just way too big and it doesn't fit into the neighborhood. And, um, although, you know, taking a wall down to make it, make it more open, they can put the wall back up to make it into the office or whatever else they want to, but. More importantly, it's too oversized, it's too big, and we have parking issues all over the city, and to suggest everybody's gonna park on the side. Um, it's just not gonna happen, they'll be in the street. And, and finally, um, you know, it, the house is being built for the current people, but as always, you know. The houses will be sold and things will change, but we just have to be really conscientious of what we're allowing to build when it comes to these variances. It's just too big for the neighborhood. And it doesn't fit into the current scheme of, of what's happening over there. So again, thank you for your time, and I don't think I'll be speaking again, so happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Thanks, counsel, for you too. Uh, Anita, you're up.
Uh, I, I live at two ninety-nine.
Anita, you gotta take, take an oath.
You've been watching me all night. Anita, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, not the truth.
I certainly do. Uh, my first concern is, I, I actually, I live at two ninety-nine Billings Road, which is two doors away from this, uh, pro, proposed structure.
Yeah.
Um, uh, my first question is, I have a lot of them. Uh, my first question is, is that third floor going to have a kitchen and a bath?
No.
No.
Well, why does it look like it is part of the first, second, and third floor? If you had a two-family house in this area. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead, Bonnie.
If you have a two-family house in this area, which there are a few. It, it's an attic, and it looks like an attic, but this looks like a three-family house, which does not belong in this area. That's my first question.
I can address that. I can answer your question, uh, on that one. Uh, this building is in a floodplain, so which is, they are not allowed to have a basement. Currently, the existing single-family one-story has a basement, but with. Uh, construction or any, any kind of work that's exceeding fifty percent of the scope of the project. Required to remove the basement, so which means the client, the applicant is not gonna have much of storage. Which I'm, I'm not sure that a lot of properties on this block has basement.
We do, we do.
Yeah, right. So, this building is not allowed to have a basement, so their only storage will be upstairs. And in residential B is allowed multi-yun property, and it's allow up to three-story. So the number of story that everybody had concern on, it's by zone. It's not, it's not something that we're requiring relief on for the number of stories.
But it, but it just does not fit into the picture that we have here on Billings Road. We're mostly single-family homes with a few double, uh, two-family homes, but this looks like a three-family house. There's one further down on Billings Road.
Right, Anita, it does. It's got three full stories, you're right.
Right, it's full three stories, looking like a three-story house. It does not belong on this street. There is one further down on Billings Road that was just built, and it's an eyesore. I'm sorry, but it is. I don't, I hate to say that for the people that built it, but it's an eyesore. And, um, I also wanted to say about the parking. Um, fine, you're gonna have a two-car garage, but you're gonna have multi-people in there, we know that.
Right.
So, I have a disabled husband. I live two doors away from this. I have people coming and going to help my husband, to visit, whatever they do for him. And, and I have to park my car in front of the house, so that if I need for him to go to the doctors or to the hospital, it is easier for him to get into the car. If it's parked in front of my house, rather than my driveway. He can't walk up the driveway, it's on a slant, and he can't make it. So I do not want any parking in front of my house, and we know that with the size of this house and the amount of people that are going to be in there. There is going to be on-street parking. First of all, or second of all, or third of all, um, it's an emergency parking air, uh, street. If there is a snowstorm, we have to get our cars off the road immediately. So where are they all gonna go? That's my question. Another question is, is it gonna turn into being a condo, or is it in fact going to be owned by one individual?
It's gonna be owner occupied.
It's gonna be owner occupied?
Yes.
Okay, but you don't know which floor?
Um, I don't think they are looking to, uh, convert it to condos.
How about, how about the airflow and, and the, and the view of, of, of the street or if, if. You could see the water from where you were. It, it's, it's just gonna be an eyesore. It's just does not belong in this area, I'm sorry to say that, but.
Hey, Anita, wrap it up.
Why we have to have something coming in. I've been here sixty-three years.
Right.
And it is a lovely community, and we're all happy together, and we all abide by the rules. And we have to now have this eyesore that's in the middle of our community, and I don't understand why.
Really did. You made your point very well. Thank you very much. You gotta wrap it up. Anyone else? Counselor?
Yes, thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to come in. I think one of the things we're missing is this is right near a broke. And these yards are very subs, not just the yards here on Billings Road, but down on Hampton Circle. I know you've gotten a lot of letters from people that live there.
Yeah.
The flooding is pretty bad down here.
Yeah.
And you're gonna be displacing a lot of water, and I think I, I will, and plus, it's coming right next to somebody's side yard. I think five feet is about as small a setback as I've seen on a house, anything. So, I, I think for a lot of these reasons, and when I got it, was basically when I got my, my zoning board notes, so there was no time to do a community meeting.
Yeah, you know, you know what? Counselor, anytime you get something like that, just, just call me up, write a letter and say you wanna put it off, you wanna, you wanna meeting, and, and we'll, we'll oblige you.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Jim, but.
My pleasure.
But at this time, so I don't, I think there's a lot of things, and I can remember being, when I was a counselor, I had this area before. People try to put decks on the back of these houses, right next door to, and, and the building department will not allow a deck.
Right.
Because it's right on an easement, it's right on where, where the broke is coming out, you can see the outfall right between the two, two, uh, yard clubs.
Right.
So, I, I guess, you know, and I, I've, I've had a chance to talk to a lot of neighbors, a lot of people in the area, and, uh. I realize that it is a, it is a residence B, but I think there are a lot of other overriding factors, like the lack of, like, lack of side yard. Lack of, uh, and it's, it's an easement. It's, this broke was piped under years ago. There is severe flooding in this area when we have bad storms. And I just don't know how you're gonna be able to address that by putting a bigger building. I know just taking away the basement, I don't know if that does anything. And, uh, so basically with what we got, I have to come out and say I'm opposed to it. And, uh, and, and I think for those reasons, I just can't see, see supporting this, uh, this, 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 uh, proposal.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wanna speak, opposed?
Mr. Chairman, we have, uh, Gina Flannery with her hand up.
Okay, she hasn't spoken yet, right? Yeah, Gina, you never spoke, correct? No?
No, I haven't. Can you hear me?
Yeah, could you take an oath, please?
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, not the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm Gina Flannery. I live at two ninety-seven Billings Road, to the left of the property. I have a small little house, and now you're gonna put this big house on top of me, and they're gonna take away my sunlight, my privacy. I just think forty-five hundred square feet, that's just too big for Billings Road. It's just gonna, if they were, if, hey, I welcome them, if they were gonna put in a little ranch. Or something that will go with the neighborhood, I welcome them to do that, but this house is just too big for this area. With the parking and, it's gonna be four or five bedrooms on that second, third floor.
It's, it's five, nah.
Yeah, so I just, I'm, I'm sorry, I just don't, I, I don't agree with it, and I wish.
Thank you.
Single-family, little ranch, like I have nine hundred square feet, they'd be on top of me. Thank you.
That's gonna happen, but thank you. Uh, anyone else? Second call?
Mr. Chan, we have had people who have spoken. I'm not sure if you wanna reopen that.
Alright, let it, let him just, Mr. Hugh, wrap it up. You got, you got a minute, go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to clarify what the architect has said. I, I disagree with what you said. Even if someone allowed the building to be three-story tall, however, if someone required the building to have a FAR or point four.
Harry covered that.
Yeah, we, we heard that. We heard what you said, and we get that, really.
Exactly, so, thank you.
Further, who else want a second spot?
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Third call?
We do have a new he, new hand is Jesse Thuma.
Jesse, go ahead. Are you on the phone, Jesse?
I'm, I'm by Zoom.
I can't see you, you got no video. There you are.
Okay.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, not the truth, to help you guys?
Yes, I do.
Jesse, try not to reiterate everything that we've heard.
All I wanna do is go on record as saying that as someone whose property backs up against this, I'm very much opposed to this project for all the reasons people have already mentioned.
Thank you very much for your time. Thank you for hanging in too. Alright, we'll call that part of the hearing closed. I guess the neighborhood spoke, the council spoke, I won't be voting in favor, everyone's saying it's too big, and, uh. You know what? I think it's too big. The more bedrooms I see could be put in there and. Getting, so I'm not even gonna, I'm not even gonna vote in favor, I'm just gonna let it go, and then come back with something that's. Nice two stories with something, something nice there that'll fit in that, that little lot that they have. So, Mr. Cavares?
Uh, I, I, I do think it's, uh, too big for the community, I think it has, wait, you know, second place, having a row, it has too many bedrooms.
Uh, I will be voting, uh, opposed.
Uh, Mr. O'Brien?
Opposed also.
Okay, Mr. Chin, comments?
Uh, I, I agree with you, which probably would be better for the neighborhood and for this project, for this piece of land. To downsize it and maybe push it back to where the wider part of the land is, to minimize the, uh, the. The, um, the enormity, if you will, of this, uh, of the structure. So I think, if that can be massaged, I, I would be willing to reconsider it.
Okay, and Mr. Hamel?
Not a bad design, but as we've seen previously, it's just, it's way too much for the size of the lot.
Yeah.
And the neighbors hate it, so you've gotta add that to it.
Yeah, sunlight's important, which haven't got here. It's in California, you gotta write the sunlight, no, the block of sunlight. We don't have those lots here yet, which I hope someday we do. Uh, but that should be taken in consideration when you take someone's lot, and it, and they, all of a sudden, I'm telling you, it happened here twice, and I've seen it twice. I've been here a long time. And I've seen people's property turn into a piece of junk, because this big giant, single-family home, enormous structure went up and took the lady. Backyard out, and she's got nothing but a mess. It's a storm, and it was a beautiful, beautiful little home at the time, so. My way of thinking's changed a lot since I've been here. Uh, so, it looks like we're not gonna do this. Bonnie, you wanna withdraw without prejudice and come back with a whole new plan and do this again now?
Um, let me speak to my, uh, applicant.
So we can move?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll, I'll let you know. Yeah, and I'll, I'll, I'll let you know.
Well, we gotta know now, so you have, you have a right to withdraw, or we can move this like in February?
I wanna rewa, I want to revise the drawing and submit for the next hearing.
All right, how about, uh, February, what do you got in February?
I don't know.
February eighth, February eighth?
Okay, sure.
Plans, and the neighborhood will know what's going on by then.
Okay.
And then you, inform, please inform the counselor and let him get a set of plans if you could, Bonnie. Have me there, get it out to the people that, that really wanna know, and send it out, and they can have a meeting even. This is a, the brook and everything, I think people worried over there would probably be greatly so, okay?
Sure, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Cavais, could we have a motion for February eighth?
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yep.
If, if the client is keeping the existing building and just build it up three stories. That would be, that would be in the finding, they don't need a variance, if, as long as FAR meets.
But, I'm gonna no, I think it's way, way too big, three stories in that, that, that part of, no. I just, I just think it's too much, that's me.
Okay.
I don't know how the people feel, but you, you only need one more to say no, but if you got two. Uh, gentlemen?
May I make my motion? Yes. Uh, Mr. Chairman, a matter number twenty-one dash eighty-five.
Uh, one second, are you in favor, because she wants to know when she goes back, are we in favor of three stories or try to make it two stories?
I'm not thrilled with three stories.
All right, Mr. O'Brien?
Uh, if she has to remove the foundation, what, what are you gonna leave her with there? You know what I mean, if the foundation has to come out from a floodplain, that changes the circumstances that we're in.
It does.
They will have to infill the basement.
They'd have to wait and see what they come up with, if they can live with a basement like they have, and go up off of that foundation.
Probably. No, she has to come back anyway, right. Yep, Mr. Himmel?
Three's, three's too much there, I think.
Yeah, I think we gotta sit there and, and you're gonna have to work something out, Bonnie.
Okay, sure, certainly.
Good evening, Mr. Cavais, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, a matter number twenty-one dash eighty-five, JCBT architect for a special permit floodplain variance. To demolish the existing single-family detached garage. And build a new three-story two-family structure with a two-car detached garage on the premises numbered. Two ninety-five Billings Road, I make a motion to continue the hearing to February eighth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
On the motion, Madam Clerk, can we have a voice up?
Yes, Mike Cavais?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yeah.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
John Himmel?
Yes.
And Mark Makin.
Yes, if we made it to twenty-second, it would have been two, 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 two.
That must be a special day, you know.
It's gonna be a special day, stock market, they're double.
Or something, I don't know.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Yes, happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving, the board, uh, some of yours owe me letters, don't forget, okay?
That's in the mail.
All right, great, thanks, guys.
Thanks for reminding, thank you.
You're welcome, guys.
Chairman, I make a motion.
Enjoy the holiday.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed, good night, thanks, guys.
Good night, everyone, happy holidays.